You make me think and you make me small. Sleeping in the bed with your feet out in the hall but don't let nobody, nobody drag you down. Keep your head high, put your good foot on the ground. You got to roll, baby, roll, roll with the punches. Got to roll, baby, roll, roll with the punches. Got to roll, baby, roll with the punches. Got to roll, baby, roll with the punches and don't let nobody, nobody drag you down. You kiss me and you hug me, fill me full of drink. You take all my money and I'm beginning to think you're just using me. I think you're using me. If you don't do something I like, I want all my money back.
We'll start our meeting, please. Today is February 4th, 2020. This is the Sound of Barbara City Council. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll take role call, Ms. Clerk.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
Mayor Mario.
Here. So, we have a ceremonial item. Will you read that for us, Ms. Clerk?
Item number one, subject Employee Recognition Service Award Pins.
Mr. Casey.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Each month, I like to come to you and recognize employees for achieving certain milestones in their service to the city. And so, I have some names to read into the record. And we have one employee here to receive her 40-year pin, so that's quite exciting. But first, with five years of service, we'd like to recognize Franker Lomelli, Street Maintenance Worker Two with the Public Works Department, Maribel Barrios, Accounting Assistant, Public Works Department, and Gerardo Soria, Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator Three with the Public Works Department. With 15 years of service, Joe Gonzalez, Facility Maintenance Supervisor, Public Works Department. And with 20 years of service, Adrian Gutierrez, Police Officer, Police Department. And with 40 years of service and to receive her pin in person today is Sarah Dunn, Senior Library Technician with the Library Department.
Come on up. Here's your pin. And I'm going to read a proclamation for you. This is a certificate of appreciation for valued service to the City of Santa Barbara for Sarah Dunn, Senior Library Technician for 40 years of service. Sarah Dunn began working at the Santa Barbara Public Library in 1979, shelving books as an hourly page. She initially worked in a temporary location at 1021 Anacapa as the library was preparing to reopen the newly renovated and expanded location at 40 East Annapamoo. Within a year, she became a full-time employee as a library clerk and was soon promoted to Circulation Supervisor. Sarah then supervised the library system's interlibrary loan unit for over 10 years before becoming the Technical Services Unit Supervisor, overseeing the processing and cataloging of all new materials. Sarah was in charge of the original 1985 conversion of the library's card catalog to an online catalog. In the 35 years since, she has played a key role in every catalog software implementation, upgrade, or replacement and has been responsible for representing the Santa Barbara Public Library as liaison with the Black Gold Cooperative Library System, monitoring the checking out of more than 1.5 million items to the public of California's Central Coast Region. Sarah's current assignment includes a focus on defining, gathering, recording, and reporting statistical information. She is an expert in library and community development data and has a keen eye for statistical analysis. Library managers and supervisors depend on her as the library department's P3 advisor. Sarah compiles and analyzes statistics about the Santa Barbara Public Library for statewide and national reports, like the Digital Inclusion Survey and the Public Library Survey, which tell the statistical story of library services in the Santa Barbara community. There's one more paragraph. Look how small they made the font to fit it all in here. I'm like... Sarah is currently working on connecting all 14,000 Santa Barbara Unified School District students in the Santa Barbara Public Library by linking their student ID numbers to the library in order to allow students the ability to check out over a million physical and digital items. Sarah's diligence, precision, and dedication to accuracy provides an ongoing public benefit seen in the library's electronic catalog and mobile app but is seldom publicly acknowledged. Sarah has worked under four library directors, Robert Hart, Carol Keeter, Irene Macias, who's in the audience, and current Director Jessica Cariante. Sarah Dunn, on behalf of the City Council, the residents of Santa Barbara, your fellow employees, and all the students in our school district, I'm throwing that in, it is a great pleasure to honor you today for your exemplary 40-year career with the City of Santa Barbara and your outstanding service to our community. Thank you so much. Say a few words?
I do have a few words. Well, thank you very much, Mayor Mario and Council and audience members, my family. Thank you, thank you so much, so much. I do have a few words. When I started out in 1980, the library catalog was on a microfilm reader. We checked out phonograph records and books and magazines. And we did it by taking a photograph of your library card next to a due date card next to the author and title of the book typed on the pocket with a typewriter. Now, if you come to the library, and I hope you all do, we will welcome you all. I hope you are already coming to the library, every single one of you. We will show you how to use our self-checkout machine. We check things out with RFID tags. We have a great deal of digital offerings nowadays. We no longer have phonograph records, which used to get returned by people who had left them in the car and they came in looking like Tiffany lampshades. And people would say it was like that when I checked it out. We have some interesting conversations still about returned materials, but most of the time, it is so rewarding and mostly because of the people. First of all, the people I have worked with through the years, they have come from all different backgrounds. They have all sorts of interesting life experiences. All sorts of people come and work at the library and it just makes such a rich mix. Most of the people I have worked with have had a marvelous sense of humor and that just goes so far to make a 40 years of working in the same place be a very good experience. And then, the patrons, the library patrons who come in. And they, they, some of them I've known for years. Some of them walk in and they recognize me because we were in kindergarten together. And if you ever knew me in kindergarten, you would, you would recognize me. Some people are like that, I'm one of them. And, and we have people who come in who are regular library users. They come, they come in, they know what they're looking for, they find it, they have a nice little chat with us, they do their thing. Others come in, they need to get a library card, they need to use a computer. We show them how to do that, we show them our public computers. And we show them our resources, which include a lot of digital and online resources, for which we are so grateful for the funding that comes to the library. And any of you who are in a position to increase that funding, please, please consider it. Because we are helping a whole lot of people. Our educational resources now with our Santa Barbara works and our adult education are just marvelous. Our outreach to schools, there are children who have nothing and we are bringing enrichment to them. And we are working with their families and we are appreciating their families and what their families go through to, to help things work at the library. So, it is, it's just a wonderful effort that, that our youth services staff in particular is doing. So, we do, we do provide a lot to the community. During the Thomas Fire, we had all the bad air quality in Santa Barbara. It all came up from Ventura and blunt down on us. So, we organized, Direct Relief came and gave us N95 masks and we handed them out. We were actually, we have HIPAA filters in our, in our building, good filters. So, we were really a refuge for a lot of the town. When you think of people who live in not very happy housing circumstances downtown, they came to the library and we were there for them. So, libraries nowadays, and you might see that all over the country, there have been some very good articles in the Atlantic Magazine about it. The library is now more than just a place to check books out, but it is still a place to check books out. And it just has been so rewarding to work here and to help support the mission of the library. Thank you.
Okay, some flowers from Ms. Cariante, thank you. Mr. Jordan, don't go away, Ms. Dunn, I think there's more congratulations. Mr. Jordan, you first.
And in addition to congratulations in particular for Sarah today, the library today is obviously not the same library it was when I was growing up or certain, or certainly when my parents were. And as we're acutely aware this morning, but also it just takes trying to get in the door at 10 o'clock in the morning to realize how the, how the library is taking a different role. And I don't really know anybody but Jessica behind you, but I just wanted to say thank you for your service to both Jessica and her staff and you, because I realize that in some cases, maybe you didn't sign up for what goes on in today's library, but you still serve a great role. And I just want you to know you're appreciated.
Thank you.
And Mr. Friedman?
I just want to thank you for all your service. I actually got my first start at the city here serving the library board for many years.
I know.
And you were a big part of that joyful experience. And I also see Ms. Cariante here, and my understanding is that the library is going first during budget hearings, so you might want to have Ms. Dunn go first.
Ms. Dunn, on behalf of our City Council, thank you so much. Congratulations on your 40 years. We'll see you for another 40 more. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll close our ceremonial items and I'll ask Mr. Casey if there are any changes to the agenda.
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, very good. We will go to public comment, and this is the public's opportunity to speak to us on items that are not on our official agenda. And you get three minutes at the microphone. Mark Marshall Waferd, you're first. Holly Pareja is out today, so Nicole Grazanti is here, she's in the back. And if any of you want to make an appointment with us or have questions of staff, Nicole will help you. We can't get into conversations during public comment. Mr. Waferd, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. My name's Mark Marshall Waferd and I just wanted maybe someone to check into my driving privileges. They were revoked, but I did go to school and complete a class back in the day. Also, I would like to know if anybody knows those three people where I pulled in off by Elwood Pier, a plane went down. It's now an artificial reef. That was back in the 80s as well. I even gave them the blankets off my bed. It was right there on the Smith Tide by Elwood Pier anyways. And I could, like to find out about the Santa Barbara movers. I made the front page of the paper. I want to try to find that picture because I want to make something of that. And also, back in the day, and down in the Camarillo, those eucalyptus trees, we trimmed those, Gauznel Tree Service and Caltrans. But also, I went up to City College and talked to the Vice President and she showed me the blueprints on the new structure they want to build up on Cliff Drive. And it consists of lights and a crosswalk at the West Campus and also on Oceano, they want to put in a crosswalk and a new bike path along the way. But hopefully that, they said within two years. Hopefully, that works out soon and sooner than, you know, than later. Anyway, there's also was a guy hurt up there on a skateboard. I might have, I think it might have been killed and a couple other people hurt.
Mr. Waferd, we're talking about pedestrian safety on Cliff Drive later in the agenda.
Okay, I'll bring it up.
Do you want to come back or stay?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, I will. Okay, one more thing. There's a girl, Christina, from St. Mary's College up in Moraga. I'd like to say hi to you if you're around. I'm 320 Oceano, shoot me a kite sometime, 93109, Santa Barbara, California. Thanks and God bless.
All right, thanks. Ann Newbling or Hubbling, you're next. With an N, okay. Phil Walker after you, Michael Baker after him, Clint Orr. Welcome. Your turn, Ms. Newbling.
So, I appreciate everybody being here. And I want to say, start with, a world degree, peace agreement has been made through Anonymous, which is a group that has outfitted the entire world with laptop computers and taught them how to use that and work as private underground reporters. They tell you everything. And so, world peace has been achieved because we speak to each other and we don't want to use filthy language or deal with, hurt the children anymore. So, I'm going to be here weekly, explain how we are going to audit the world and charge them with planetary annihilation, which is what's happened. Cam Sanchez is my father-in-law and he caught 9/11 with Domino's Pizza and I'm furious. So, I want to tell you that it took one person to catch 9/11 with Domino's Pizza and Mark Boltonhouse ran Lost Hills Sheriff's Department in Malibu, you've lost your mind. These are people who have been the most influential to me and I want to let you know that it is zero tolerance at this point because I had my hip broken by a homeless person at Casa Esperanza and I want them charged with mass murder. This homeless business has to stop. Everything has to stop, the drunk driving.
Can you speak right into the microphone?
Yeah. The drunk driving has to stop. And what we're going to do is work through the 9/11, 1199, I'm dyslexic, 1199 Foundation, which is the sheriff's department and we're going worldwide. We're sick of hearing 9/11 and being reminded. So, I'm going to tell you, I'm from University of Chicago. They have a clean bomb which is detonated in the basketball court and nuclear fusion microscopic particles. And I, I skated through it in 1963. I grew up in Arthur Compton's house, the guy that designed the atom bomb. And I want to say, I'm really disgusted with people and nothing happens in this town. I get hit, I'll go by everybody and I'm leaving.
Okay. Phil Walker, you're next, followed by Michael Baker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll try to be a little bit more pleasant than that, hopefully. Libraries are great. You know, if I hadn't gone up to the Cal Poly Engineering Library in 1978, probably October, I never would have gotten a lot of that information in the Gibraltar Dam construction thesis. And I got an A minus. So, you know, it was well worth it. It was a lot of information calling through there, but their collection of old engineering news record magazines put the cap on that thesis. Okay, one other quick thing. I did attend the Milpos area scoping meeting at Franklin Center last week. And a real good thing to see, Gene Tyburn was there, the arborist. And I think the new city arborist, Nathan Slack, was also there. So, they're looking at the ficus natidia on Milpos and what can be done to sort of bring them into more, more orderly aspects, so to speak. And one thing though, the street I live on, Quinientos and Milpos, that crossing there, even though there is a dedicated crosswalk with a crossing light and going toward the Sailor's, oh, the replacement for the Sailor's Sycamore on the east side, trying to cross the crosswalk at Crown Liquor, I almost got popped a couple weeks ago. A lady blew out of the Milpos, or let's see, the Summit Gas Station, you know, a little bit to the left there, just put the pedal to the metal and was turning, going north on Milpos. She didn't even see me and I was, and I'm not the only one that's had problems trying to cross there. And it'd be great if they could get some sort of camera set up, not to ticket people, but just to get a good extensive viewing of what's going on when people are trying to cross there. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Michael Baker, Clint Orr, Rick Claussen, Jeffrey Dornbos.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Michael Baker, CEO, United Boys and Girls Clubs. First of all, I want to thank you for recognizing your employees the way you do. I think that's fantastic. Don't see that in every city. I think that's a wonderful touch. I will go personal for a second and just say that I love the library. The library is a great resource for our club kids, but also if it wasn't for the library, I wouldn't have met my wife, not the one here in Santa Barbara, but another library. So, it's a whole other story. And her name is Marion the Librarian, so there you go. It's a whole other story. So, with that being said, I did want to share with each and every one of you that we had our annual meeting a couple weeks ago at our West Side Club and we gave out certificates to all the kids that have received their gold card, blue card status, and they now have blue card status at our clubs. We had, we had 99 children in our organization that achieved their blue card status. And that means they've attended the Boys and Girls Club over 200 days in the same calendar year, which is a phenomenal achievement to get kids to come that often. And that really relates to the, to the staffing that we have in our club facilities. But what really resonated with me and what, what I want to share with all of you is that at the Boys and Girls Club, as you know, we're there for all children. It doesn't matter what you look like, what you believe in, what you don't believe in, it's irrelevant. You can come to the Boys and Girls Club. We don't turn anybody away. And at the, at the end, the final award that we give out to the child that's attended the club the most, we had a child from our, one of our clubs that attended 269 days out of a possible 280. And what really resonated with me and really makes the statement that the club really is there for all children is that this child is autistic and they're coming to the club every day. And the staff that are working with this child and all the children are really making an environment that makes that child feel safe. That's an incredible statement about the people that are working in our clubs. I'm very fortunate to have the team that we have in all of our clubs, but I would encourage you, if you haven't done so, please, please, please stop down to the West Side Club and see what's happening every day. I think you're going to walk away feeling great and you have an incredible city manager in Mr. Casey. I've seen a lot, he's a good man. He's a good man. Thank you, Paul. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Clint Orr, Rick Claussen, Jeffrey Dornbos, Ken Dunkley, Monica Ramirez, welcome.
Mayor Mario and Councilmembers, Clint Orr from beautiful downtown, where am I, Chiltonham in Montecito. Briefly on the library situation, I love the library system. However, at the same time, I think there should be noise regulations. I have had a number of the library staff being very, very loud and disruptive and I think that everybody should learn to be very quiet. Libraries should be a sanctuary like a church and there should be no loud banter amongst librarians. Now, second subject, the Coast Village Nonprofit Center, I'm just going to put those in press releases so you can get the details on that. Third one is, hey, City of Santa Barbara versus Flightline. Now, I want to just mention, I'm pretty familiar with the building. I submitted a plan to make that into a country dance hall for the community and for the airport to thrive, six years ago, actually. So, before they leased it to the Sierra Grill, I actually had a contract in at the city level through a qualified real estate broker to lease that building as a nonprofit country dance hall. Then, the Sierra Grill came in and got a 10-year lease. And then, Warren Butler came in and I'm a buddy of Warren's. I don't, he can keep running the place, but then we had the Flightline investors coming in and then we got two attorneys. So, we got a bunch of plaintiffs all unhappy and we just need to get my nonprofit in there and put in the, and I'll go to court with it. I have a resolution where everybody gets paid out fairly, there's no losers. City wins, Flightline wins, Sierra Grill wins, Warren wins, and both attorneys get paid. And so, I'll put that, I'll be at court with that and I'll give you guys a lot of information about my plans. It's already attached to the general plan, I mean, the, of the airport, master plan. I attached it in October of 2015. And I'm going to give you a little bit of information on that. "Once upon a time, there's a lonely airport. Lonely airport huffed and puffed to expand and improve services, but the people cared not. Carriers left for greener pastures, travelers bailed to faraway airports. Lonely airport's Amtrak film was sad too, for no one wanted to stay in play past State Street. Sad Amtrak's into the line, sad empty for nothing was nearby. Why fly to your fine airport or travel by rail to Colita when nothing is there, the good people would say? The airport honky-tonk will save the whole area. I want, I want to build a, a building right across the street at the, the old movie theater." I know it is.
Your time is up. Thanks so much. Mr. Claussen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. They say a picture is worth a thousand words, so I'm going to give it a try. I usually take a little bit, a medium amount of local credibility, I know, I lost it. Local credibility for living here in the city for 35 years, but I'll stop doing that after hearing the accolades for a 40-year employee at the library. I just, I can't touch that. What I've offered to you today, and you each should have a copy of this, are the relevant municipal codes on lighted signage. The pictures that are there, my wife Kathy and I took back in August and then again in September and we, at those times, submitted them to zoning enforcement. And they're in the hopper somewhere and I'm not bashing that department, but Kathy and I walked around this morning and all of these infractions are still there. Even the owner of the now infamous Institution Ale Appeal used the infractions on State Street in El Pueblo Viejo as justification for his own non-conforming neon sign. Now, the city is bending over backwards to accommodate the business community. You're going to hear more about that later on the agenda. But I would like to hear more about what downtown Santa Barbara is doing to help El Pueblo Viejo. I think they need to do their part. They need to encourage downtown merchants to obey the ordinances. And I think that it's unfair to those merchants who do obey the ordinance, the sign ordinances, when others come and do not obey them. It's a very competitive climate down there. I understand commercial business is a competitive business. So, people that are using...
What I've offered to you today, and you each should have a copy of this, are the relevant municipal codes on lighted signage. The pictures that are there, my wife Kathy and I took back in August and then again in September, and we, at those times, submitted them to zoning enforcement. And they're in the hopper somewhere, and I'm not bashing that department, but Kathy and I walked around this morning, and all of these infractions are still there. Even the owner of the now infamous Institution Ale Appeal used the infractions on State Street in El Pueblo Viejo as justification for his own non-conforming neon sign. Now, the city is bending over backwards to accommodate the business community. You're going to hear more about that later on the agenda. But I would like to hear more about what downtown Santa Barbara is doing to help El Pueblo Viejo. I think they need to do their part. They need to encourage downtown merchants to obey the ordinances, and I think that it's unfair to those merchants who do obey the ordinance, the sign ordinances, when others come and do not obey them. It's a very competitive climate down there. I understand commercial business is a competitive business. So people that are using lit signs, LED signs, lighting, string lights, rope lights are just playing unfair. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dornbos? Ken Dunkley, after you. Monica Ramirez. Anna Marie Gott. And the final speaker will be Barry Remus, and I won't take any more slips today. Go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor and City Council, thank you again for allowing us to speak. I've never before been so civically active as I have been recently, and the more and more that I do it, I'm recognizing the larger impact that can come from reaching out about a specific matter and the specific matter that I've been scrutinizing in these last two years. One of the things I've learned in the process is about California Residential Code R-105.6. The code reads, "The building official is authorized to suspend or revoke a permit issued under the provisions of this code wherever the permit is issued in error or on the basis of incorrect, inaccurate, or incomplete information, or in violation of any ordinance, or regulation, or any of the provisions of this code. The ADU projects on Areba Way are clear examples to which this code applies, and my concern is that instead of enforcing it, what I see are unelected officials in the Building Department making subjective decisions to justify misinformation and egregious potentially illegal flaws in the permits. These subjective decisions have a lasting harmful effect on the city as a whole and help create an environment that encourages the likes of Dario Peña and those who would seek to emulate him. The cul-de-sac community of Areba Way is made up of families who have lived there for decades. It is a congested high-fire hillside zone, which is one of the first lines of defense against wildfires spreading into the heart of the city. And just as we are the front line against wildfires that increasingly threaten our city, I am assuming the Building Department is there as a first line of defense against bad actors and scofflaw builders and not in support of them. The Areba Way ADU projects are landmark precedent-setting cases, and as I said last week, citizens and licensed contractors are watching. And if these projects are allowed to move forward in defiance of Building Department ordinances, many more will certainly follow in their wake. As elected officials, I'm asking you to take up measures with the city administrator, Casey, to create a directive for the Building Department to objectively enforce rules and regulations to protect the community as a whole against these egregious infractions that clearly violate this ordinance and others. Infractions that will certainly increase the opportunity for wildfires to spread and for evacuation routes to become deadly. I thank you also for your resolution to temporarily stop ADU construction in high-fire zones, and I hope that that will continue. I would like to speak with each one of you further about the specifics in greater detail at your convenience. Thank you again.
Very good. Mr. Dunkley, your turn.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. I guess I might say to myself, I defer my time to Jeffrey, given all that we've been listening to recently. I really think there's a crisis of integrity in this country, and I hope that it doesn't extend here. I'm going to shorten my comments. I think you know about the public safety risks, and I want to thank you very much for the policy that you've adopted regarding ADU development in high-fire risk areas. And I just hope that that will be permanent. My neighbors and I are the ones that are quite concerned about not only emergency vehicle access, but also evacuation opportunities from where we live, up above the Mission. As far as the action based upon the California Residential Code R-105.6, it's been suggested that because of the criminal case, that the city has fourteen counts against the developer for these two projects, that that will solve the problem. But there is a potential that that case could be settled, maybe just with fines, and then immediately, the developer that's been working actively with the Building Department to resolve the issues, the many, many errors that he submitted an affidavit about on the original application stating that they were true, will essentially evaporate, and he could start construction immediately. So the unfinished business for you now is to make sure that Mr. Casey and the Building Department enforce R-105.6. It's clear that the builder in this case, who's an experienced licensed contractor in town, could have prepared accurate applications if he had wanted to. He didn't. And I hope that there will be action in this case so that my neighbors and I are not subjected to the public safety risks that increased density would occur up there. I hope you'll take responsible action in this case. Thank you.
Monica Ramirez, come on up. Anna Marie Gott, after you.
Once again, good afternoon. I want to first tell you, I am a real native Santa Barbaraan, indigenous person. This is my ID. For fifty-one years, I have lived here in Santa Barbara, and I can be accounted for of my residency. And I have never been homeless until 2017. This is my blood card, and it says A positive. That means my father is a white man. He is a Dutch man. He is Y, A positive. My mother is O positive, the X, okay? I am A positive. I am half Native American indigenous person, Santa Barbaraan, and half Dutch of Santa Barbara. And I want to know why I do not have any rights, that I don't get to see my son. They get taken from me and given to a multi-convicted felon after Judge Hill gave me a ten-year protective order. He violated that 2012 protective order that Judge Herman gave me, and like I said, it says here from Officer Sykes. Okay, it says here, "On 2/13/15, Robert L. Howard was asked to leave 518 East Cannon Perdido." I have a protective order, three-year from Judge Herman, okay, by Dakota, my son Dakota. And after an altercation ensued, and Howard choked Riperta and attempted to throw him out the window. Riperta is a juvenile, and he and his mother fear Howard. Scott is named on this, Scott Howard, Monica Ramirez, Dakota Riperta, and Scott Howard. This man, I had a three-year protective order from Judge Herman because he did a sexual assault on him, and he's been stalking me, and so has the Howards. Mary Howard has been, and Diane Howard. Diane Howard is trying to assume Scott's, his, her daughter, I mean, her son. After this man was put to prison from Judge Hill, three months later, Child Welfare Services is at my door. Mary Howard makes a report against me, and I was physically disabled, and I had surgery, and I have Child Welfare Services reports that said I had just had surgery, and they still broke in my apartment and gave me a $51.50 for being gravely disabled. They drugged me, and I have pictures of where it says Cottage Hospital, big blood marks. And I'm telling you, I want help, and I want my children. I do not know what's going on, but this is my home. I was a Peabody Charter School Elementary parent for twenty years. My children were patients of the Children's Medical Clinic for thirty-two years.
Thank you so much for your comment.
I'm a great mom. I want investigation. I love my children. My son is in danger. He's in the custody of Robert Lee Howard, and nobody's enforcing the law.
Thank you. Your time is up, Ms. Scott.
Please enforce the law. Give me back my rights. I've never done anything. You told me you'd pay me the tariff. Sorry, I didn't mean to kill me. I love my children. I love them. I love my children so very much, and I've been kicked out of the victim. I didn't do anything wrong, and they have no reason.
Whenever you're ready, Ms. Scott.
Good afternoon, City Council. I would like to remind everyone about the public comment that you received in the Agenda Packet from Piper last week. She actually noted-
Would you get closer to the microphone, please? I mean, go ahead and take a seat. Can you?
Okay. Sorry, I'll have to start over. I want to remind everyone about the letter that Piper White Olheiser actually wrote and placed in the Agenda last week. She voted in last year's election. However, her vote did not count, even though she came to City Hall and voted on a provisional ballot. She moved. In January, she found out that she was not reregistered to vote in District One or at her current address, which is nine South Alisos. The city actually was required to not only provide her with a provisional ballot when she came in, but also was required to reregister her. If you take a look at this, I don't know how you're going to turn that around online, but she actually, there you go. The state of California actually states on their website that she not only needed a provisional ballot, but the elections official needed to reregister her. She wasn't reregistered. Her provisional ballot wasn't counted. She's asking for help from you to direct the city staff to help her, one, find out why her provisional ballot was not counted, two, what happened to her reregistration form, three, get a copy of her signature from her provisional ballot, and four, a copy of her signature from the county elections office. It's pretty simple, but for some reason, no one at the city or the county will actually communicate with her and tell her how she can actually obtain these documents. We want fair elections, and I don't know if you know this, but Iowa, you know, kind of messed up with their elections last night, and they had a hundred and seventy-nine thousand supposedly people in gymnasiums all over the state, and they had to count noses. In this case, it's a ballot, a provisional ballot, that someone walked into City Hall and filled out, and you only had to count a little over 2,000 ballots. And yet hers remains unaccounted for. I think you have a problem, and I think that someone needs to reach out to Piper and find out how you can help her get the documents that she is requesting. She is willing to fill out whatever documents, make any requests that's needed, so that she can actually have a copy of the documents she's requested. And by the way, if you take a look at the second one, it says, "Voters who are not on the polling place roster for an unknown reason," she moved.
Your time is up. I gave you a little extra time because you had technical difficulty.
Thank you.
So thank you. Mr. Remus?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council members, and welcome to our new council members and returning council members as well. Forgive my helmet hair, I just rode in. I'm Barry Remus from COAST, the Coalition for Sustainable Transportation. You'll hear more from us later on another item, but getting back to public safety, COAST wants to thank the City of Santa Barbara's transportation team for the recent and ongoing safety improvements that are currently underway. Some new stop signs were introduced on Cota Street, at the Olive Street, Arnaldi's intersection, a tricky intersection for motorists and bicyclists alike. I think it'll be a lot safer now, and we applaud that in the interest of Vision Zero. Also, new sidewalks are going in on Laguna Street where there were no sidewalks before, which is really great to see, especially considering the up-and-coming Haley Street corridor. It's all the buzz, and perhaps will continue to be. And moving on to another element of public safety, we also really want to thank the city and recognize the efforts the city and the city attorney's office is currently making with our Upper State Street traffic safety issue where a famous fast-food restaurant is located, and their drive-through has been immensely popular. We also want to thank Eric Friedman for bringing this to the attention, and also to Larry Beckford, a Concern activist resident, who took the initiative to really escalate this to the city's attention. However, the city was aware of it. We understand that things are happening, and we appreciate those efforts. We do want to underscore how serious of a situation this is, not only for motorists and bicyclists and pedestrians, and any day now, somebody could get seriously injured. We really also want to echo Rob Dayton's press release that went out from the Transportation Office to really encourage the public to take the right step and to skip the drive-through if they see the car is backed up onto State Street. I would say, walk or ride your bike to the restaurant instead, but until the traffic situation gets resolved, that could be sketchy. So COAST wants to thank the efforts of the city, and we really encourage and challenge us to move forward to do more with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes public comment, and we'll go to the consent calendar. Thanks, everyone, for coming out for public comment. Do you have some items to read?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item number three, subject funding to transition house for acquisition and rehabilitation of property located at 817 North Salsipueta Street to provide affordable housing units. Recommendation, A, that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a loan agreement to transition house in the amount of $1 million secured by a deed of trust with a thirty-year term for acquisition of property located at 817 North Salsipueta Street property, and an affordability control covenant imposed on real property with a ninety-year term. Item number four, subject adoption of an ordinance for annexation of 691 North Hope Avenue. Recommendation, that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the sectional zoning map of the City of Santa Barbara as referenced in Santa Barbara Municipal Code Section 30.05.020 pertaining to zoning upon annexation of assessor's parcel number 057-113-007. Item number five, subject adoption of ordinance release agreement with Federal Express, Inc. Recommendation, that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the airport director to execute a lease agreement with Federal Express, Inc., a Delaware corporation, for 59,410 square feet of hangar and office space, and 10,500 square feet of paved parking lot space at 495 South Fairview Avenue at the Santa Barbara Airport for a term of ten years with a five-year option to extend. And item number six, subject adoption of ordinance approving the 2019 to 2021 Police Officers Association Bargaining Unit Memorandum of Understanding. Recommendation, that council ratified the memorandum of understanding between the City and the Santa Barbara Police Officers Association by adoption of, by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting a memorandum of understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Police Officers Association for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2021.
And would you read number seven? We have a member of the public wanting to talk about that.
Item number seven, subject contract amendment for airport poly and paraphlorical substance PFAS investigation efforts.
We'll start with item number three. Ms. Gott, you wanted to have a say on 817 North Salsipueta Street. This is funding for a transition house acquisition of that property. Three minutes.
I just wanted to point out again that while transition houses, great work, we actually need moderate and middle-income housing, and this housing, or these housing units, are actually going to be pulled off the market only for low income, and my understanding is, members or families that are associated with transition house, so a minority of individuals that are homeless. So the last word, I think, is important, homeless. We are not talking about people that are already housed in the City of Santa Barbara and have to find a new place to live because they, their rent has gone up, their family has grown, or their current landlord wants them out. So what we are doing is using public funds to go ahead and take a home off the market for homeless families, not for people in the moderate income, or the middle income, or people that are already housed. I think that's a bad policy. A better policy would be to support the creation of actual housing units, and you can do that anywhere- that anywhere in the city. But instead, we are giving funds to someone who is going to remove housing from the regular market and set it aside very specifically for people that are already homeless. I think it's a bad policy, and I think you really need to think all of the policies, decisions that you have, including the decision that you are not really doing anything about the 800-plus illegal short-term vacation rentals in the City of Santa Barbara that have removed housing, housing where our workers used to live and who tourists on the weekend now reside in. Those homes used to be for our workers. That's a really poor decision, and as I said earlier, I think this decision today is also a poor one because it does not ensure the creation of new housing, and it actually, in my opinion, reduces our housing opportunities for our moderate and middle-income families, which we are in desperate need of. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman, you're the Chair of the Finance Committee. You all looked at this item?
Yes, we did last week, and we unanimously approved it. But I'm going to ask Ms. Boshke with Transition House to come up, to speak to this item. I see her in the audience there. I just had, for the record, just a couple of issues that were raised this week and last week in emails to us.
Welcome, Ms. Boshke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm happy to be here and happy that Transition House has had a very successful 35-year partnership with the City of Santa Barbara, over which time we've literally helped thousands of families who are from Santa Barbara, who once were working, who once had housing, who lost their housing, to return to housing. This project will do the same thing. Some of you may know, but perhaps not all of you, that we are not the first buyer to bid on this project. This project is a property owned by a family, an old Santa Barbara family. One of the matriarch of that family passed away. It was put on the market, and it was actually, they took an offer before ours last October from a developer located outside of the Santa Barbara area. That escrow fell through, and fortunately enough, we were able to secure an accepted offer with the seller, and of course, he had to be patient because, as you know, the escrow for a process like this is about 90 days. But it was very important to him and his family that the property continued to be used for low-income individuals. They did have, at one point, a Section 8 tenant on that property. So, we are continuing with that wish. The people that will be in those units will be working. They will have rent to pay. They will have to work. And furthermore, we also are glad to be able to get a hold of this property for use by the city through Transition House because it's on a nice, big lot, 12,000 square feet, and we hope sometime in the future that we could add housing to it. We don't have plans to do that right now, but it was attractive because of that possibility down the road. So, thank you to all of you for the support that you have given Transition House in the past. We're excited about what we can offer to the City of Santa Barbara with this property purchase. Thank you.
I just had one other, another question for you in regards to the prior tenants. There was alleged that Transition House had kicked them out. Can you speak to what happened?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to that. No, we didn't kick anyone out. We're here asking for money to buy the property. We don't own it yet, so we don't have the capacity to evict anyone. The property was owned by a family, or is owned by a family, three houses on the property. One house, when we put in our offer, was empty because the matriarch of the family that lived there, I believe, passed away. Second house on the property was also occupied by a family member who was fortunate enough to be in escrow on their own home out in Goleta, so they're moving into a new facility. The third unit was occupied by a Section 8 family that has gone on to find another place to live. I don't know, they were in the process of looking for a new place. It wasn't our doing that caused that, but they did, and so now they have moved out. So, the property is vacant. No one was evicted.
Thank you, Ms. Boshke. No further, I don't have any further questions. I just want to make a couple of comments out of the Finance Committee on this item.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did support this unanimously. I believe, contrary to Ms. Gott, that it is good policy. This is a 90-year covenant that provides affordable units for 90 years, and as we heard today, there was, there was the potential that this property could have been sold to an out-of-town individual or company, and who knows what they would have done with it? It could have gone to market rate, which, as we know, market rate is not protecting the missing middle that we have. So, in this case, we are able to lock in 90 years for some of our workforce, and there are workforce here that don't make 100% of the area median income. They make less than 80%. So, the Finance Committee supports this, and again, it's 90 years, and I think Transition House, for all the work that you're doing, to enable individuals who were here, some of them were, were in homes, and they fell into homelessness for whatever reason, and are able to get back on their feats, on their feet, and appreciate that. So, I'll be supporting this again this week.
Ms. Sneddon, a comment on number three?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Just an additional comment to thank Transition House and Spash for all that you do in the community, and the whole idea is to transition toward homefulness and full lives with families, and so appreciative and very proud to be supporting this endeavor. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll move on to number seven, Mr. Walker. This was the contract amendment for airport poly and perfluorocal substance. You had to choose one where it was a hard word to say, huh?
Yeah. You did better than I can, Mayor Mario.
Go ahead.
PFAS, I think Josh Hagema brought it up last week. It's, I guess, in the trades, they use PFAS, polyfluoroalkyl substance, and perfluoroalkyl. You know, it's like a generational change. Back, back in the day, when the city had problems with the Ambassador Laundry, I think it was PERC, paracoura ethene, and also tetracorea ethenes were industrial solvents, and PERC was a dry cleaning solvent used abitously. But what's happened, there was excellent headliner article, I think, in this past Sunday's LA Times about it in Colorado Springs area. Well, it is just decimating the groundwater in that area, and it's a big, big problem. We don't want that to go here. So, it's, it's good the money's being spent to do a little bit of investigation and hopefully catch any problem in the bud, but it's normally used, and aircraft firefighting foam is present, and also waterproofing. You'll find it in your house, in the, oh, rugs possibly, and furniture. It's pretty ubiquitous, and I had no knowledge of it till I started, you know, about half a year ago, they had an article impacting Aquifers, Wellfields, and California, even right up the coast here, and Hunter Leggett, they're having problems. So, it's good the money's being spent now rather than having more and more problems. One other concern is, is any of this firefighting foam being used at the, you know, the, the training tower adjacent to El Estero because they found it in sewers and getting into storm drains into the groundwater. So, it's a big concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's no further objection, we'll waive further reading, and I'll take a motion to move the consent calendar forward. That was Friedman, Sneddon, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to number 17, I think, Ms. Clark.
Item number 17, subject resolution and support of multi-use path and crosswalks along Cliff Drive. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara supporting a multi-use path and crosswalks along Cliff Drive, and to direct staff to apply for a grant to fund design, environmental review, and construction.
Very good. Whenever you're ready. Mr. Dayton, you're going to start us off?
I am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Good afternoon. Derek Bailey, Public Works, your traffic engineer; Rob Dayton, your transportation planner. We are super delighted to be at this point. One of the things I learned really quickly when I came to government in '91 is things happen very, very slowly, and this is an iterative part in that process, which is a huge milestone for us to celebrate. We actually have a project on Cliff Drive, and we want to talk to you about the history leading up to this point, our engagement with the Mesa neighborhood, and what are the things we can hope for in the future about getting something done? On a roadway that is a Caltrans roadway through a Santa Barbara community coastal neighborhood, and that Caltrans is abandoned, and so now what do we do to bring it back to the, a roadway that is the scale of the Mesa neighborhood? So, the history, it's not on here, but Caltrans built that road in the '50s, and it was originally State Route 225. Before they relinquished it to the City of Santa Barbara, we did a road diet with them, which essentially means we took four lanes, five lanes to three lanes, which the Mesa really, really liked. The relinquishment was a really bold move for the council at the time because we didn't have the money to maintain the street. It's actually 1.3% of the service area in the city. It's a, it's a big maintenance effort, but they did that knowing that someday we'd have Measure C. Now, we have it, and we have ways of getting projects moved in with the Active Transportation Planning Grant, which is the purpose of being here. We've been doing outreach since 2013, and leading up to the Bicycle Master Plan, the Cliff Drive, Los Mercedes Roundabout, which was another courageous council member decision because that improvement cost more than a traffic signal, but added value to the community that people really appreciate today. And then, one of the greatest accomplishments of Public Works, in my view, in transportation is this money for Los Mercedes Modoc Pathway. Breaking ground this summer will be available to ride in '21, summer of '21. So, pretty amazing things happening, but still this Cliff Drive relinquishment. This is what we've heard since the relinquishment, and it's kind of been this very long-out, drawn-out listening workshop where we've had to tell people, okay, we don't have the money yet. So, people really like the road striping that was done. They really like that. They, they really feel like they need to be able to cross the road. People don't feel like they can do that very well safely. They want to continue that restriping to the west of Miggs Road, and then better cycling facilities. Traffic's still too fast, even in the section that was, went to two lanes. Santa Barbara City College access is challenging, and it still feels like a highway. So, with that, we have devised a Cliff Drive corridor plan. Derek is going to walk you through the details in the way only he can. It addresses safety issues, better mobility for everyone out there, pedestrian and cyclists included, improved safety, especially near Santa Barbara City College. And then, the opportunity for this Active Transportation Planning Grant, which the City of Santa Barbara has already captured 40 million of that pot, way more than, than per capita population for California. These are the planning limits. So, you can see it's out to Los Mercedes, and even down to Henry's, sneaks down Shoreline for a bit, and then over to, actually, the bottom of the hill and all the way to Castillo, so below Rancharia, which is really wonderful. Didn't think we could get there, and I think we've got a great plan to do it. Community outreach with the corridor plan that you're about to hear, we've, hear about, we've done extensive outreach. Everyone that's included in this list, plus Santa Barbara Unified School District and the county parks. So, we've talked to a lot of people about this project. Here is what the approach workshop looked like at Marin Row School on the Mesa. We love this strategy of printing out a big map so people could see the whole street at once and really get around it. It's really tactile, lots of notes on this, and then staff-heavy so that people can really ask questions in real time. What does that mean? What does this mean for parking, which is a big question always? And what is it going to look like? Here's what we heard from the feedback from all those public touchpoints. Strong support for frequent crossings. We had some choices between, do you want to ride on both sides of the street, or do you want a single path on one side of the street that's two directions? Favor for the two-path option, two-way path option. Strong support for moving forward with Active Transportation Planning Grant. That grant is a very competitive process, and as you know, we've done very well. I will have you just point out that one of the reasons we have done so well is the disadvantaged community points that we get. That's 10 points on the score. We do believe we can capture two of those points, but, but we're going to have to do really perfect in all the other categories. We think we can do it, but I'm just saying, it's going to be very competitive. I also will point out that one of the things we're talking about is that our population's about to shift because of the census. We'll be put in a different pool of competition that may not be as favorable for us. So, this might be one of our last shots to get this particular project. It addresses the safety issues on Cliff Drive. Like I said, mobility, connectivity for the land uses, closes the gap in the network. This is going to be amazing. I'm going to show you a map next. And then, access to recreation and coastal access and daily commuting. So, it really solves a lot of needs, not just commuting, but really recreation. This is closing that gap. This is the, so the county got the, got another ATP grant to close the gap all the way to the Auburn Trail, which is off-street all the way to Goleta Beach. And then, this is the grant, the one we're building this summer, is off-street all the way down to the roundabout, and so, and then, the other projects we already have is, of course, the Cabrillo Beachway, and hopefully, a connection through Pershing Park or around Pershing Park at some point. This project would connect all those paths so that you could go essentially from East Beach Volleyball Courts to Goleta Beach off-street and never be, have that conflict of traffic. Just, if you told me that we were going to get there at some point, when I first took my job, I would have said, wow, that will be almost impossible, and here we're talking about it. Vision Zero, although the lead-in to this is the real, the backstory is the, is the Caltrans Highway and the Mesa community's tenacity and relentless pursuit of better for their community, Vision Zero is a real big deal for the council and your strategy, and it's really important to point out that in the last 10 years, we've had some serious injuries, we've had deaths. This project, had it been in before, in 2008, would have cured all but a few of those deaths. So, it's, it's, it's a really big step in getting to Vision Zero and will prevent further serious injury and death on, on the highway. Here's a blow-up of your heat map of those existing collisions. You can see that the hotspots are near the shopping center, the Mesa Shopping Center, where you have a lot of conflicts coming out of driveways, and then also Santa Barbara City College. So, with that lead-in, I'm going to hand it over to Derek Bailey, our traffic engineer, who's going to talk to you about the inspiration for this project and the details of how, how it would work.
Mr. Bailey?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. So, as we were talking to the community about this project and trying to get a sense for really what they wanted their street to look like, one of the presentations that we did, we showed them a lot of photographs, just photographs of projects around our region and as well around the country, just to get a sense for what they want Cliff Drive to look like and really what they were gravitating towards. One of the things that became really apparent to us is people want crosswalks. They want to be able to cross the street safely. So, we started looking at what locations along Cliff Drive will make sense for crosswalks. As you can see, there'll be seven new crosswalks on Cliff Drive, three new traffic signals, one at Comunocomma, two at Santa Barbara City College, and we'll talk about those. You'll also notice there's one crosswalk at Salida del Sol and Shoreline as well. That one came up because this neighborhood, they've been talking about, how do they get to La Mesa Park over here? And in order to get there, there's a really challenging crossing of Shoreline Drive through that curved section as it turns into Miggs. This crosswalk would facilitate those movements. The crosswalks will be about 800 to 1,400 feet apart. They'll be at major entrances to the neighborhood. They'll provide good access to the pathway for people to get on and off the pathway, and as well, they'll facilitate transit ridership. You think about the bus stops. People get on the bus in the morning on one side of the street. They come back at the end of the day on the other side of the street. There'll be a crossing of Cliff Drive involved, a challenging crossing. So, these crosswalks will be located near bus stops as well. One of the trade-offs, and I say trade-off, that will be associated with this project is travel time. You know, we're introducing a lot of features to this project. is travel time. You know, we're introducing a lot of features to this project, a lot of crosswalks. This will likely result in slower travel speeds from one end of the corridor to the other. We've modeled this. Right now, travel time from one end of the corridors takes about six or seven minutes to get from the roundabout over to Castillo Street and Montecito. It's likely going to be an extra one to two minutes to drive the entire length of the corridor. We did talk about that with the community, and generally speaking, the community liked the idea of reduced operating speeds. So as far as the pathway itself, this photograph from Orange County really resonated with people. This is their coastal pathway in southern part of Orange County. Again, they did a lane reduction. They installed a median and created a bike path in the road base. Another photograph in a more urban area, again, a bike path within the roadbed, but it's, the separation was created by a separated landscaped median. And so something similar is certainly possible for Cliff Drive. I'm going to quickly walk you through just some of the highlights along the corridor, as well as some of the more challenging locations that we ran into. So just starting at the Cliff Drive and Los Bacitas Roundabout, the pathway we expect would run along the south side of Cliff Drive, along the bottom of the roundabout. When we built the roundabout, we actually anticipated this path coming in someday, so this little section for a few hundred feet is already built. Off the left of the screen, the pathway would go to the entrance of Aurora Borough County Park. At the top of the screen, you'll notice on the west side of Los Bacitas, that's the new path that's going to be under construction this summer. So when that's completed, it'll end at the roundabout until we can complete this project, and then there'll be a crossing through any of the crosswalks of the roundabout to get between the two pathways. Moving up the hill near Mesa Lane and Flora Vista, I'm just going to spend a minute talking about this slide. There's some real challenges at this intersection. Flora Vista goes towards the top of the screen, and Mesa Lane comes towards the bottom. This is the intersection with the two traffic signals on Cliff Drive. This intersection is the reason that the road restriping has never moved west from Miggs. What happens with this traffic signal? Because it's offset, it's got offset intersections. The intersections don't line up. The intersection, we have to serve one side of the street with the traffic signal and then the other side of the street. So traffic on Cliff Drive gets a red light for longer than it normally would because it's serving the two different side streets separately. During that long red light, traffic can build up and queue up. And because of that, it takes longer to flush that traffic out when the light turns green. And that's been a technical challenge that we've had with this area. So what we're going to have to do is maintain two lanes through this section in each direction. That's going to be important to maintain capacity at the intersection, but as well, just in case there's ever an emergency and we need to move people up the hill from the roundabout area, we'll maintain capacity in this section. A few other things just to note. Along the south side of the road between Cooper and Mohawk, we are going to lose three parking spaces. These are the only parking spaces that we're going to lose along the entire corridor, but it is a trade-off. And the only way to maintain those two parking spaces, or those three parking spaces, would be to go down to one lane in each direction. Again, the trade-off with that would be long queues during the PM peak and as well as losing some capacity for evacuations. Crossing all of the side streets, the entrances into the neighborhood, you'll notice this green highlighted area right here. Pathways off to the side of the road can present a challenge for drivers, just recognizing that there's a cyclist or a rollerblader, somebody using the pathway. So what we want to do is we just want to facilitate slow movements across the path and as well really highlight that it is going to be a pathway crossing. So we are planning to do raised crossings. This is an example of a raised crossing at the Santa Barbara Airport. This is a pathway crossing in the Bay Area. You can notice the elevation of the crossing is raised a few inches, and as well, it has the green highlights. It's just, it'll slow traffic down going across the path and as well just really highlight, give a visual highlight that the area is a pathway crossing. Moving on towards the shopping center. This slide right here, it's hard to see, but the purpose of showing you this, it's a collision diagram. And this is one of the tools we use in traffic engineering to analyze traffic collision patterns and as well try to identify safety improvements. This area, as you might recall from the heat map that Mr. Dayton showed you, was a hotspot along the corridor for collisions. So what we did is we looked at the collisions in this area. We plopped them all onto a map, and we started looking for patterns. And what we noticed is a lot of the collisions are involving drivers that are pulling out of private driveways trying to turn left on the Cliff Drive. That's the majority of the collisions that are happening. What that tells us is drivers are having a challenging time at times, recognizing when a safe gap is that they can turn out on the Cliff Drive. Why this is important for this project is we can't introduce a pathway going through this area with these types of collision patterns and not expect for cyclists and pedestrians to get hit on that pathway. So what we are proposing to do is to introduce a series of raised medians through this section, and that way drivers would only be able to turn right out of the private driveways, no left turns out of the private driveways. That would make for safe use of the path as well. It would address a lot of the existing collision patterns that are happening. To accommodate people wanting to turn left, though, from the shopping center, they could come out onto Camino Calma to a new traffic signal where they'd be able to turn left onto Cliff Drive. Turning left onto a major street at a traffic signal is certainly much safer than trying to cross five lanes of traffic. And from the south side, we expect that most drivers will turn right, go down to Cliff Drive, and make a U-turn. We do have some geometry modifications that we would have to make here just to make sure that turning radius can accommodate most passenger vehicles. These medians generated the most comments at the public meetings, though. Some people were concerned. It's definitely going to be a change in travel patterns for people that are used to turning left, but it is the only safe way to do this. Without these medians, the project cannot move forward. It's really an essential feature of the project. Continuing on to the east, near the SBCC campus frontage, there'll be a new traffic signal at the west campus driveway, which will be relatively straightforward. This area here is the Loma Alta intersection and the east campus driveway. This is a little bit more complex, so I'll just spend a minute here as well. We are going to do some geometry changes at the Loma Alta intersection so that the two sides of Loma Alta line up better with one another. We'll be able to improve the efficiency of the traffic signal by doing so. But the pathway will go along the south side of Cliff Drive. It'll meander around the existing bus stop and across the SBCC east campus driveway, where there will be a new traffic signal as well. Just a few things to point out. While the path is meandering behind that bus stop, it does go onto SBCC property. We've been communicating with their staff. They're excited about the project, and they're ready to cooperate with the city on this project. These traffic signals are awfully closely spaced together, and it's not ideal, but given the topography challenges getting in and out of City College and finding another location for the driveway, there really is no location that we could move the driveway. So we are kind of locked into this location. So it'll just require really careful coordination with these two traffic signals, but it's certainly possible. And then going down the hill towards Castillo Street in the Lower West Neighborhood, you'll notice going up the hill, there's only one lane, and that is the only way that we can get a pathway going down the hill. It'll be against the stone wall next to the viaduct. This is the Rancheria intersection at the bottom of the hill and leading into the Lower West Neighborhood. Just west of that intersection is where we will merge two lanes into one. And like I said at the beginning of the presentation, we did our traffic modeling. Even with the lane reductions, we're only in the reduced speed limits that we're expecting. We're expecting between a minute and two-minute travel time difference from Castillo Street all the way out to the roundabout, which is about three miles. And the pathway would end at Castillo Street. At Castillo Street, there are bike lanes that go down towards the beach. And as far as going up through the interchange, we do have a study that we'll be initiating in about a year in order to improve connections into downtown for both cyclists and pedestrians. As far as the schedule, what we're planning is to be preparing grant applications between March and June. The grant applications are due to the state at the middle of June, so that's what we're aiming for. We should have results from those grant applications back by October. We think we have a really solid application. As Mr. Dayton mentioned, it is a very competitive program, so there are no guarantees, but we are aiming for success. Anticipating good results in October, we will begin design and environmental in July next year, and design and environmental will likely take three to four years, so construction would be around 2025. Staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution supporting a multi-use path and crosswalk project along Cliff Drive and direct staff to seek funding. The resolution is important because a resolution, a strongly supported resolution from the city council tells the people that are reviewing these grant applications that the community's behind this, and that's an important evaluation criteria.
And that we're offering matching money? Do I have that right?
Madam Mayor, we are recommending to put in approximately $250,000, about 1% of the project.
Well, not matching, but...
Yeah. It'll increase the competitiveness of our grant application, and it's likely funding that we would have to spend along the corridor doing maintenance and ADA upgrades, anyway.
So you're ready for questions?
Well, Madam Mayor, I just wanted, I just wanted you all to know that this is the first of potentially three Active Transportation Planning Grants that we're going to bring to you in the ensuing months. One that's already scheduled, I think it's dancing between the first meeting in March and second meeting in March, but that'll be the west side transportation plan, and then possibly one for Milpus. We're working out some stuff. We've been doing a lot of work on Milpus on the east side with the community. We may be bringing one of those forward. So this is the first of potentially three, definitely two.
Okay. Ms. Harmon, kick us off with questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is very exciting to see. I just have a question about how we deal with changing traffic patterns. So you talk particularly about putting in those medians to prevent folks from taking a left turn. I'm assuming there's some period of transition where the community needs to get used to the fact that we can't make a left turn anymore, and I imagine that's quite a dangerous time. I'm wondering if you guys can speak to the processes, is it about education, or how do we make that transition from what we have to what we want to get to in terms of letting folks know how they can drive and what the patterns are there?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harmon, great question. Leading up to implementation of this project, we are going to be having more public workshops, public open houses. This shouldn't surprise anybody that it's coming. When construction actually begins, though, that there is going to be a day where those left turns aren't going to be possible anymore. So we are going to have to do some public outreach just to educate people on how best to navigate the area. But there will be a hard day where those aren't possible anymore. But just based on the outreach we've done so far and what we'll be doing, we don't expect this will catch anybody by surprise.
Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question, but I just want to say, I can't wait. This is so exciting. You two are a dream team with what you've done. And I drive Los Bacitas down to the roundabout, which I was resistant about, and now I love, and then come up and all the way on Cliff into City College. I pass by that west campus entrance where students are really taking their lives in their hands, crossing. And in the morning, when the sun is shining and it's difficult to see, and if you don't know to look for them, it's a very dangerous situation. I had a student come in, just new to the campus, and last week she came in and said, can't we put crosswalks in there? And I was happy to say, done, it's happening. So I do have a question, though, about the traffic pattern right where it's between slides, oh, they're not numbered, Rancheria, I guess, that left...
Rancheria's...
It's like three slides back.
Keep going.
Right, this one here. So is this, this is coming down, maybe it's not Rancheria. When you're coming down Cliff, and there's the left-hand turn into the west side, and there's not a turning lane there, and so cars coming down, they don't get in the lane they're supposed to be in, similar to the situation you fixed on Los Bacitas at State. They're coming down, then there's a lot of jockeying for position in a backed-up lane, and then people cut over to go left onto the freeway, and there's pedestrians crossing there also at the same time. And I'm wondering, does this particular plan address that traffic flow pattern as well?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, yeah, that is this intersection at Rancheria. So I believe you're talking about this lane right here, which just shared through left-turn lane. The left-turn volumes are pretty low, but one left- turner can hold up a whole lot of traffic. We don't know that whether or not that problem is easily solvable. We've got some ideas that one of these two lanes could possibly be converted into a left-turn lane, similar to what we did on Los Bacitas. But we do have a lot more traffic analysis to make sure that only one accepting lane going up the hill is possible. What we don't want to do is cause congestion back towards Castillo, and we're not sure that's feasible or not. But it is something we are thinking about. We are planning to study further as we get into the detailed design of this project.
Thank you. And that was the one question I had, and I really trust your visions on that and things that I know myself, I'm always resistant to the change and I can't see it. And then once you implement it, it makes everything so much better. And the public outreach you've done on this over the years and public comment, and it's a really comprehensive look at that. So thank you. That was my only question.
Great. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have several detailed questions. One, just another question, but I'm happy, as you know, to mention the word evacuation several times. Thank you for that. You know, I've had conversations for you in the past because I envision at some point, somebody's leaving Hope Ranch or Hidden Valley for a fire, or somebody's leaving the harbor for an inundation event, and they're coming our way on the Mesa. And really, the only, the only negative I see there is where those left-turn prohibitive islands are. That's really the only reduction in capacity right there because you're losing that middle turn lane that would have been open, right? Negligible?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, I would expect by the time drivers are to that point, if they're coming east out of Hope Ranch, they're well out of harm's way.
Okay.
As far as coming up from the harbor, they're either going to be coming up Loma Alta, which there's, the improvements we're going to make are actually going to improve capacity at the intersection, or they'll be coming north on Shoreline as it curls into Miggs, and there'll be no change in capacity there as well. Or we're actually looking at converting one of those lanes into a second left-turn lane as well. So there might be some capacity improvements that we can do at that intersection as well.
Again, I'll have my faith in you guys, like you heard earlier. And then, missing, of course, is that festering intersection at Lighthouse Road. Just nothing that can be done there?
Turn.
Well, you know, it's just, it's a left-turn horror two times a day for people coming out of Lighthouse Road.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, we've looked at that as well. It's a possible traffic signal location, but again, it's really tight spacing to the Miggs intersection.
Yep.
And there are trade-offs associated with really tight spacing, and it's something we can look at in detailed design. It wouldn't be in a very expensive feature because it would just be worked into the existing traffic signal at Miggs. Control-wise, the control's already there. But it is a trade-off, so we would have to determine whether or not those two bursts of traffic during the day are worth the trade-off of having a really tightly spaced traffic signal intersection.
I couldn't read the dots on the collision screen, but is that particular area a high-collision area?
Lighthouse is surprisingly not.
Lighthouse and...
Most of the collisions are Miggs and west in front of the shopping center.
Okay. And then, I agree with the decision to put all the work on the ocean side of Cliff Drive, but there's a stretch there between, on that side of the street, Camino Calma, the other side of the street, and the signal, where there's at least five driveways for businesses, maybe six, if I'm counting one with the condos, too. maybe six, if I'm counting one with the condos, too. So, and all those driveways serve certainly less cars than across the street, where there's only two driveways coming out on Cliff, right? You're following me? So do you anticipate any problems there with adding that intensity of use for multimodal pathway use and all six of those driveways having to get across that back out onto the road?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, that's the exact reason why we feel the medians are an essential feature of the project. The driveways are not spaced very well. You know, if we were designing a brand-new road from scratch with modern access standards, those driveways would be certainly spaced much further apart. But it is a built environment that we have to navigate our way through. That being said, we look at the amount of traffic coming in and out and the collision patterns, and we can really solve most of the problems just by eliminating those left turns. And you give drivers one choice, and one choice only when they're turning out. They can turn right and look for the people on the pathway.
Very good. Then, last question. On that crosswalk you'll add down on Shoreline for access over to the other side of the street to get to Mesa Park, is it any big deal just to also box that intersection in with a crossways, crosswalk that's not lit, not a flasher crosswalk, but actually emphasize that crosswalk also on the north side of Shoreline? Follow what I'm saying? Because you're making the point that they're coming from that neighborhood to this side, but they're hopping across the street, a smaller street, with no crosswalk to get onto the big crosswalk. And isn't that really just an emphasis point to kind of funnel everybody to that intersection, walk across it, walk across it, and that would help? And it's just paint?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, yeah, that would be an easy thing to add. What I think I hear you saying is just putting it right there?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And then I'll reverse my questions and comment really quick. I'll just be a little different than other council members, but I want to thank you, Rob, for your reference to Mesa tenacity. But this is a community benefit project that benefits a ton of people who visit the Mesa and will now have opportunities to move about in a safer manner, number one, and number two, in a manner that is a reduction in vehicle use, so plus-plus. And in particular, I'm really thrilled to see the crosswalks down near Schiffco and the church, because that is just a constant dance in that area with people going across there. So, very good job. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Let's hear from the public. Luis Reyes Martin from City College will be first, Kim Stanley to follow, and Jeff King, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Murillo and members of the city council. Congratulations to those council members who were recently elected or returning. I'm here today in my capacity as the Executive Director of Public Affairs and Communications at Santa Barbara City College. We've been very glad to work collaboratively with the city administrator, Paul Casey, and the excellent team in Public Works on this Cliff Drive project. We're appreciative of the significant public outreach that has taken place, including gathering input from college staff, presenting to our SBCC Board of Trustees, and the community meetings that have taken place on the Mesa. SBCC has long wanted to improve public safety at our east campus and west campus entrances, and the application for the Active Transportation Program grant funding provides a unique and wonderful opportunity for a collaborative approach to improve safety in this area. We are strongly in support of this project and in seeking the grant funds, and we look forward to continuing to work with city staff on this project over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stanley? Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and city council members. Thank you for adopting the Vision Zero strategy, and thank you for your support of the Safe Routes to School program. We live in a city where walking and biking could be the norm. It could be how people choose to get to their destination. Projects like the multi-use path along Cliff Drive would encourage people to make those types of decisions. It could connect a lot of people to a lot of places. It's a really exciting project, and Coast staunchly supports it. I direct Coast's Safe Routes to School program, but I'm also a parent with kids in local schools. When I coordinated the Walk and Roll program at Washington when we were there, it was an encouragement program to get more families walking and biking to the school. All those families on the north side of Cliff would say, we can't do it, there's just no way to cross. So it would highly benefit all those families to be able to get to Washington School with sustainable transportation. And the path would also help Monroe, Washington, and McKinley School students have access to more places. It opens up the possibility to use sustainable transportation for a lot of people. It's also nice when you're educating kids to have specific examples, like we're always teaching them, it's great to be outside, walk and bike places, it's healthy, it's good for the environment. But when you don't have as many infrastructure improvements on the roads that make you safe to do so, it's hard to have tangible examples for those kids. So this path would make our jobs easier in saying, have you used the path today? And what do you think of it? The only unfortunate news about this potential boon for walking and biking is that implementation of the project is projected to be 2025. That's a long time away. We're wondering if we get the funding, can we put this exciting project on a faster track to implementation? Please allow staff to apply for funding for the project, and please consider ways to get the project done before five years have passed us by. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff King and David Landecker will be our final speaker. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Jeff King. I'm here representing the Mesa Architects. For those of you who aren't familiar with us, we're a small volunteer planning group of architects, planners, and landscape architects, and we've been working for the last 12 years now on ideas for improvement on our Mesa neighborhood. And Cliff Drive has been one of our primary focuses. Since it is our main street, city staff's proposed plans for Cliff Drive incorporate many of the ideas we put forward for making our street more user-friendly and safe for all modes of transportation. Bicycleists and pedestrians will particularly benefit from these improvements, and students will have safer paths to school, as Kim said. Mesa residents living on each side of Cliff Drive will finally have safe and convenient routes to walk and ride to the beach and to shopping and to church. We applaud staff's efforts. You guys have been great, and strongly encourage you to approve this resolution in support of the path. And I have to say, our neighborhood has needed improvements for many decades, and it's about time to get them done. So, please support it. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Landecker? Representing SB Bike?
That's true.
Very good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, new, and I won't say old, I'll say veteran. Welcome. My name is David Landecker. I am the interim Executive Director of SB Bike, or the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition, or BC Centro, whichever one of those you happen to know. First, we want to thank city staff, both those who are here and those who are back probably in their offices watching this on TV, particularly Jessica and Sam, who come to us all the time with these things and talk to us about what can be done and whether it works. And they are serious about bicycle safety and getting people on bikes in the city, and it's really appreciated. There was a lot of talk up here and from this spot about Vision Zero. My guess is that not everyone listening or even here knows what Vision Zero is. It's a concept that says, we want to design our cities and our roads so that zero people are killed on them, whether it's children, adults. We don't want to see anyone on bicycles or walking killed. We don't want to see anyone in cars killed, but I don't think that's part of the same vision. If we want people to be on bicycles, what we need to do is make bike lanes that connect to each other, safety that connects to safety, because anyone's trip is only as safe as the most dangerous spot. And so what this does is it makes an awful lot of bike lanes fit together so that riders, whether they be children or adults, can feel safe every bit of their trip. And that is an enormous thing, not only for promoting bicycling, but for Vision Zero, for saying, we don't want people to get hit by cars on their bicycles. Staff mentioned that your vote today is about community support. I just want to say, we at SB Bike represent 1,500 bicyclists in this community who are members of our organization. I can tell you that the bicycle community supports this. We hope you will please unanimously vote in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That closes public comment, and we're looking at this recommendation. Mr. Friedman, you're ready to go? Go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions. One is the follow-up on the public comment on the 2025 construction. Can you speak to that, just what goes into that and why it's 2025, or if there is any flexibility on that?
So, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Friedman, it's largely dependent upon the grant cycle. So we're applying for a cycle, and then we have this long pause for funding while we're going into design and engineering, and then the construction. So, you know, for instance, we got the De La Vina project, which I think is at council next week. You know, we got that three years ago, two years ago now, seems like three. And then now we're just coming with a design contract, because we've got permission to spend money, but we're still far away from build, you know? And I'm seeing Councilmember Harmon going, come on, hurry up. And, you know, so this is just what I opened with. This is just the way it works. And so, and then the other thing I would say, thank you for that question, is we're all talking about, like, this is a done deal, which I highly caution. This is probably a $15 million project. This is a very competitive grant with not a lot of disadvantaged community points, which we're used to getting with our other portions of the community. So we will do our very best to get every single point, but it's going to be tight. And maybe even the west side will score higher than this. We don't know. We'll score it ourselves, we'll do what we do. But, yeah, it is a process. We're working with the state, and they release funds way after we get the money, and then it's designed and construction, and it's just a long haul.
Thank you for that clarification. So we hear the comments, if we can get it done sooner, but there's a lot of, there's a process we have to go through. And if we can, we will, but we're trying to get it as efficiently and as quickly as possible. The other one, question I just wanted to, so I understand it, is on the, I guess it's the east campus of City College, that intersection where we've had some accidents, that's going to need a stoplight now? Am I reading that right? So I'm really pleased with that, because that's a very major intersection with a bus stop and a lot of left turns there, and really pleased. So I'll just kind of go into my comments, I guess, now. So just real quickly, I want to thank staff, Rob and Derek, you've done a great job, and your other staff that have worked on this. I know it's not just the two of you, but all your staff. Coast, Santa Barbara Bike Coalition, for all your advocacy. Our Mesa Neighborhood, I know you've been very active in this, and the residents on the Mesa as well. And this does speak to Vision Zero, which we've adopted up here. And what gives me even greater confidence in this is what Councilmember Sneddon mentioned. It is the Las Pecitas project, and just the creative thinking that went into it, and having it go down to one lane of traffic on one side, and it's worked out, and everyone loves that project. And I think that's a model project. And so I really trust the information you're providing here and with the community input. So I'm excited to support the staff recommendation, and I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Gutierrez? Very good. Well, I, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, and I would say to people, of course, we want it to move quickly. We are implementing other projects out of the bicycle master plan, and the east side and the west side are looking at bicycle boulevards and other improvements. So thanks for your patience on that. We're all very dedicated to bike and pedestrian safety all over the city. We're doing what we can. So if there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and take a vote, and that's it. We're adopting our resolution, showing support, and directing staff to go get that grant funding. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There, unanimous, very good. Mr. Landecker, unanimous, just like you asked? Very good. We'll go ahead and close that item with thanks to Mr. Bailey, Mr. Dayton, and everybody else, and move ahead with the next item. Ms. Clerk, number, is it 18? Are we on 18?
18. Item number 18, a report from the Community Development Department on actions taken to enhance downtown economic vitality.
Okay, switching gears a little bit.
Yes, we are.
Mr. Buell, whenever you're, oh, you need to get here.
Madam, pardon me, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm George Buell, Community Development Director. This afternoon, we're going to give you an update on a project that has been, or on activities that have been ongoing now for, over the course of two years. One is our Accelerate program. That's a program that is designed to expedite permits through the, in the downtown, through the development review process and plan checking. We'll also be giving you an update on one of the follow-on efforts. We had a number of people in the community show up about a year and a half ago with over 50 recommendations, a number of which directly related to the Community Development Department. And I convened a stakeholder group, and we called it the Downtown Economic Vitality Working Group. In hindsight, that's way too long a name, but it is what it is, and they had a number of recommendations, or subsequent recommendations, to what was stated in a public hearing about a year and a half ago. And then finally, last July, you received a report from the Cosmont Companies relative to activities, that the recommendations for improving economic vitality in the downtown. Again, a number of those recommendations directly related to my department, and I'm giving you an update on the status of those. So starting out, one of the biggest improvements I would say that we made was bringing, or having Mark Aguilar, who's here to my left. He is a project planner. He's been with the city for how many years?
Twenty-five years and five days.
So he's been with us for over a quarter century.
Great.
He has a great working knowledge, specifically of the downtown, because he used to be, he used to work as part of the redevelopment agency, and he loves to see stuff get built. And so Mark will start off, and he and I will trade off just a little bit as we go through the presentation. So, Mark?
Thank you, George.
Mr. Aguilar, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Good afternoon. I'm going to start off my presentation, or actually, I'm going to tell you my presentation. I'm going to do a quick overview of the Accelerate program, give you some data and graphics on design review applications, touch on vacancy rates, and then also pre-application services that the Accelerate program offers. And, George, did you need to mention Gene?
I will.
Okay. So what remains a challenge for the downtown corridor of State Street is vacancies in the commercial spaces. The Accelerate program addresses Gutierrez through Solas Streets. This was initiated by council in August of 2017. And what we do in this program is we have some dedicated staff, HLC staff, as well as plan checkers in zoning, as well as building and safety. We provide priority placement on agendas for sign review and historic landmarks commission. And we also provide priority when applicants are submitting their building permits. On the next slide, this is the Accelerate eligible parcel area. This is State Street between Cabrera Boulevard on the right of the slide, all the way up to Solas Street on the left, which would be the north. And design review applications, those are reviewed by the HLC at two different levels, the full board, which is the nine-member commission, as well as lesser projects that aren't as complicated at the consent level, and that's one reviewer from the board, sorry, from the commission. Those meetings are every two weeks. And what we found is in the first 18 months of Accelerate, it took about 15 to 20 days, and most recently, the nine months after those 18 months, it's taking 18 days. So we're kind of hovering in that area of 15 to 20 days. And as a baseline, before we started Accelerate, it was also kind of around 20 days, but it 'd come down to 15. So, you know, it doesn't sound like much change, because I think we're moving pretty well within our process, and a lot of it depends on some other factors, which I will touch on in a little bit. And then I have administrative reviews up there. That's also another opportunity for approvals kind of over the counter. A lot of our projects, or a lot of projects can come in and be approved sometimes that day, or it might take up to seven or eight days, but somewhere in that range, and that's a lot faster than our consent or full-board reviews. Factors that affect the overall duration of time it takes to process is the quality of the submittal, project complexity, perhaps it's a historic building, noticing period, if it's required, can tack on another 10 days to that, and also the point in the meeting schedule when the application is submitted. So for example, if we have a meeting every two weeks and you submit the a meeting every two weeks and you submit the day after that meeting, staff might process it in a few days, but it might take another week and a half before you're heard. So, I have a few slides that I'll move through quickly that are just kind of showing activity in the past two years. The first 18 months here shows you design review applications, so those that went to HLC. Then the next nine months, or I should say, the last nine months, so fewer, a shorter time period. And then this one should be showing all. So, there's some faded out ones that were the first 18 months, the most recent nine. And of those 54 applications that came in, 78% were approved in that time period. Sign applications. So, this is the average time to a decision, whereas the, when I spoke about design review in HLC, that was the average time to the first meeting, because there can be multiple meetings. This time, we're talking about actual approval. Prior to Accelerate, it took about 25 days. We bettered that during Accelerate to 21 days, and most recently, kind of bumped that up again to 25 days. And again, some of that is just the timing of when the application is submitted. And also, if the application comes in and there's changes made, that resubmittal will take additional time. And so, I have this statement up there about conforming signs. I should touch on that. So, in our regular sign committee, they meet every two weeks. It's three members. Conforming sign is a weekly meeting with one member of the committee. And if your sign isn't too big or too large, and it complies with most of the ordinance, they can usually review that that day. And we'll get applications in the day before that morning meeting. And they can often get processed and approved that very next day. So, in the recent nine months, of the conforming signs we had, 19, 14 were complete. And that was an eight calendar day, I missed calendar, but eight calendar day average approval time for those. That's pretty quick. And usually, we find that with most signed permits, it's anywhere from, and varies, but it can be two to four weeks before someone comes back to actually pick up the permit. A few more slides, just kind of showing sign activity. This was the first 18 months, up and down State Street. Then we, in the last nine months, a little fewer, but still distributed throughout the whole corridor. And then this is, you know, to your update, showing all the signs in all the locations. Building plans, again, just showing activity. We're busy. Andrew can attest to this. Here's the last nine months. And this is the two years. And of the building plans that were submitted and approved, about 49% in that time period were approved over the counter. And that also just kind of depends on the type of application that's coming in. Okay. So, this is the fun slide. This is what people might be excited about, I'm hoping. Vacancy rates. So, we've been coming back to you for a few years now with updates. And we've seen the trend rise and then slowly start to fall back down, starting in June 2018, which is also the time we started relying on Radius for their data collection. Just before we finished this PowerPoint, we got info from Radius showing that we're now at a 10% vacancy rate in January 2020, on State Street, between Gutierrez and Solas Streets. So, everybody should be really excited about that. I really am. And then below State Street, we do a staff walking survey. And of the 34 storefronts we see there, there were two vacant, one, a restaurant that just recently went away, and one's a vacant space next to the visitor's center. I'm going to go back really, 10%. That's a big deal. Okay. So, vacant storefronts, this relates to vacancy rate. This is, I'm going to show you just three quick slides.
Mr. Aguilar, I'm going to interrupt you. Mr. Friedman has a quickie.
Sure. Sorry, I normally would do this, but in the staff report, you mentioned that there's two different types of vacancies. There's the ones that we're dealing with, and there's the ones that the public sees. One has to do with contracts and leases, and one is vacant storefronts. Which are we going off of here, so we can compare apples to apples?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, thank you. That's a good question. So, in these slides that I'm showing here, these are the perceived vacancy rates. So, some of these might be, well, they're vacant, or they might have a lease, but there's no one in there yet. So, they're vacant. Gene, did I get that right? I did not get that right. It's the other way around.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Thanks. April 2019.
There's a question from Ms. Sneddon.
I'm sorry. I guess that was clear to Mr. Friedman, and I'm not clear on the perceived. So, perceived is if even if it has a lease, it looks empty. But which one of these numbers on Slide 17?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, as Mark indicated, we previously were looking at what was visible from the street. City staff did not have available whether properties were under lease or not. And so, there was a difference between the perceived vacancy rate, so that's what the passerby perceives, versus how the industry describes it. We wanted to be on the same page with the industry. And so, we wouldn't be debating with the commercial real estate brokers who are expert in this. And so, we decided to use their data. What we see here is properties that are not, that do not have a lease on it currently.
And then just for clarity, in each column, have those been adjusted to, so now it's apples to apples? Or at some point, it switched over to the industry standard, as you're saying, not the perceived, but the actual? Is there a switch over in this chart?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, yes. That switch was June of 2018. When we initially come at that time, we indicated it was like 11.8%. Then we got Radius data. And so, from March forward, we had that corrected in our staff reports to this higher level, 14.8. So, this actually is the lease rate information, not the perceived percentages.
Thank you.
Very good.
Moving back to vacant storefronts, now, these dots are actually kind of the perceived rates, right? These are the actual vacant spaces that we're seeing. And then in November, we had five pop-up storefronts. That data has changed now for January of 2020. There are three. I think it was one on the 600 block and two on the 900 block. And so, oh, and this number should be changed. So, we were planning to reduce the street-level storefront vacancy from 10%, not 11.6, toward that 5% target. And our future program focus continues to be on workflow and organizational improvements and increasing public awareness. We have a website for Accelerate, and we've added to it. And we're actually developing, well, we'll actually talk about that one later. So, we have a lot of information of services available on the Accelerate website, which, on that site, we have what council approved fee waivers for a year ago. Accessibility requirements assessment, so a certified access specialist can be asked to go out to vacant tenant space and kind of explore and give general guidance about what's needed. Plumbing fixture consultation assistance, also something that has been catching people out in the past. After they submit, they find out, "Oh, I need more plumbing fixtures." We added to this planner consultations for land use and zoning. So, before you sign a lease, please come talk to a planner. We're happy to spend some time so you don't sign a lease and find out your land use isn't allowed there. Interesting story about the accessibility requirements assessment. We had a local off-State Street retailer exploring a empty space on State Street because that person heard that rates were coming down. So, they asked for some Accelerate services to go out there. Building staff went and explored, kind of documented generally what would be needed. It turns out, it didn't work for that proprietor. However, about a month and a half later, we had someone else interested in that site. We already had the documents generated. They were from out of town. We were able to forward them in about two or three hours. I followed up with that individual, and they felt very positive about that information and want to work with the property owner to move forward. So, I think that was a really business-friendly outcome for that type of operation. Planner consultations, we've had four in the past nine months. And then for accessibility assessment, there were six requests. And those six, of those six, three also requested plumbing fixture count assistance. So, people are, this doesn't sound like a lot, and I would agree, it's probably not a lot, but it's a little bit more than last time. And we're trying to advocate this more. That's all I have. Do you have any more questions before we move on to the economic vitality portion of the presentation?
Ms. Harmon, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question on Slide 22, it looks like, with regard to the continued improvement goal of the Accelerate Program. It says the goal is to get from the current of, I guess, 10% down to 5%. And is that reduction, you're looking at that specifically and only because of Accelerate? Or is that in conjunction with other efforts we might make toward, you know, lowering the lease rate, or the vacancy rate, lease rate, whatever? Can you, is that specifically about Accelerate? Or is that, we're looking at that number as sort of a general, everything we're doing is going to get that number down?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harmon, we wanted to set a metric that both the city and the private sector could agree to, as to what constituted a healthy economy along this corridor. We had, you've seen what the vacancy rate has done historically. And according to commercial real estate industry, 5% represents just the sweet spot for both the buyer and the seller. And so, that's what we've been working toward on this. What we can control as a city is represented in what we're seeing in the Accelerate Program. There are other aspects of it, however, over the course of time, where, and I'll get into this a little bit later, just activities and actions that have been undertaken by the private property owners and by the real estate industry as well. And so, it's together, we're seeing gradual improvement.
Okay. I think what I was just trying to get at is there are, if, when our economic vitalities are, whatever we're calling that person, comes on board, that person could do some work looking into beneficial industries and that, and that would go towards us reaching this 5% target as well? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that would be, that would be part of it. What you're referring to, and again, I will get into this a little bit, because we're looking at an economic development strategy for the downtown. We're lacking that. And we've heard that from the private sector. We recognize that internally. And we're working toward it.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
So, on the pre-application services and the fee waivers in particular, so that's Slide 23 here, prior to that, prior to having this, the applicants would have had to pay those fees?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, that is correct.
And for this type of service, what, generally, how much would that, would that range? I know there's a big range, but is it a few hundred dollars, a few thousand, or?
I believe the planner consult was $4.65 at the time. I can't speak to the building. About 300 for the other services.
So, it is saving, it's saving time, dollars and time upfront. And then the example, I think it's a great example, is that you're saving this information on each site that's accessed. So, there's actually a benefit multiple times through, in some cases.
Yes, I concur.
Mr. Buell, is it okay with you if I call it Mr. Dearing, just to get a little snapshot from him about what's been going on with the storefronts? Would you come up, please, sir? Since we're talking about the empty storefronts, it seems to me some stuff is going out. People are moving into different storefronts. Pascucci moved from 700 block to 500 block. So, there's a little bit of movement. Just if you wouldn't mind taking a couple of minutes and telling us, you're eyeballing it, and you know what's going on down there. Tell us, please.
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the council, happy to be here. We're seeing a lot of moving pieces in State Street. And just to touch on those perceived vacancy rates, one thing that we have more of that we hadn't in the past was pop-up stores. And so, if a pop-up has a month-to-month lease, if you walk by, it feels like it's full, but it's on the market. So, that's a case where the actual vacancy rate is higher than the 8% perceived rate, because a lot of those pop-up stores are in there. Or if someone's coming to the end of their lease, and they know that they're not going to renew, and that space is on the market, they may still be in there, but the space is available, and we count it in our vacancy figures. Big picture for State Street, you know, we've started to see on some of the blocks, rents come down a little bit. And we've had enough data points out there where you can show a property owner, hey, on the 900 block, let's say there's five vacancies there. These are the asking rates, and here were the latest deals that took place. If you show a property owner one data point, that may not be enough to have them consider the new value for their property. So, that's something where there's more data out there to help property owners and tenants find where the, you know, the market is. The food and beverage side, we've seen those lease rates and activity remain very strong. Just if you have an existing restaurant in place that can be used, tenants want to take a chance going after a space like that. Some of the soft-good retail spaces that have turned over, those have been a little more challenging to get people interested. And some of that comes to the size of the space. As we've talked about before, a 3,000-square-foot retail space in today's environment is just a lot of rent for one tenant to undertake. I was just talking to Dan Farick, and the pop-up group Mosaic that went in to the space on 1200 block, they ended up doing a new long-term direct deal. So, that's a perfect case study to where an owner took a chance with a pop-up, it, you know, found its footing and turned into a long-term deal. So, hopefully, we have some more of those stories.
Thank you. Perfect. That's very, Mr. Gutierrez, question for this gentleman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you happen to know which block of State Street has the lowest rent?
Tough to say. Depends on the space. On State Street, you'll have some spaces that are very long bowling alleys. On the 1200 block, there's a, I think, a 6,000-square-foot space that is very long and linear. And so, that space may rent for half as much as the one next door, if it's a more traditional square box with more frontage. And so, it's hard to say. Right now, there's some affordable space on the 1,000 block that I've been a little surprised hasn't moved as quickly as we would have thought.
Mr. Jordan, a question from Mr. Dearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Dearing says, "Just wondering if you'd feel comfortable, kind of with the ears-on-the-ground perspective of, do you come across people still, whether it's you're entertaining a client for a vacancy, or more important to me, and the, kind of the hidden challenge of using vacancy rates, is who has today's store that is struggling, but has somebody that can go in it, but is also scared to come get involved with the process?" So, how often do you hear from your clients that, "Hmm, we'd kind of like to go there. We'd kind of like the location, but we see the process, the perception of the process still as very onerous, or something we don't want to attempt?"
Well, I would say right now, tenants' eyes are wide open about the potential challenges that face them with a major remodel. A good example is, I was showing a church group some space, and their use occupancy is very much different from what was in there. And they knew it would be a big project. I can connect them with Mark, and he gives a general overview. And they'll know, "Hey, don't even waste your time here because of these three items." And that's good information for them, because a lot of the time, if a tenant is out looking at space, they may not want to spend a couple grand with an architect. "Hey, can I even work here? What are the challenges?" And if they can get a little feeling of how the city may view that space and their occupancy, that can be very helpful. So, it doesn't waste their time, and it doesn't waste their money, and they can then look at some other space that maybe is an easier fit. But that question of tenants' occupancy and what may be needed is one that comes up quite a bit. And we try to do the best we can in educating tenants, but it's a challenge.
And so, I would assume some of these arrangements or deals happen before we even know it. There's an existing business there. We don't know a lease is coming up. There's negotiations going on. So, what's just as confusing or challenging to me is today's underperforming property, where an owner is not seeking to meet its full development potential, even though they may have a suitor waiting to talk to them. Does there any type of sense of that you have also? Because today's underperforming entity is tomorrow's vacancy, frankly, right?
Well, and some of that comes to landlords strategizing early on with their tenant of, "Hey, your lease is coming up in three years. And how can, if you potentially want out of the lease earlier, could we set up a scenario where maybe the space comes on the market, and the landlord can cancel the lease anytime early if they have that exciting tenant?" Or maybe it's a tenant who needs eight months of permitting and planning. And if they can work with their existing tenant, maybe that deal can happen. Whereas if the space is sitting vacant, a landlord may say, "I don't want..." I don't want to wait for 12 months, nine months, six months, for the new coffee shop, new restaurant to get in and open. So part of that is dovetailing expirations with tenants and just making sure that landlords are having those conversations with their tenants early and letting brokers in the community know if there's maybe a creative deal to put together.
Lot of cats to herd.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Ms. Sneddon, don't go away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just a quick question, I think, because the Radius model, you're with Radius, yes?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Is there any way to weight a vacancy rate by terms of size? I mean, a small vacant spot versus a cornerstone large spot? Do those both count as one?
So the, the way we're doing this vacancy is based on storefronts. There's 249 storefronts from Solas to Gutierrez. Now, most of the time, if you hear a commercial vacancy rate, it's based on square footage. So exactly as you're saying, when the Amazon deal was done, that was one storefront, but it was 46,000 square feet. So you, different ways to look at it, but I think that's important to note that when the 600-square-foot hair salon goes out, that changes those vacancy figures. And us in this room having Macy's full is more important in terms of the health of State Street. So that's always something to keep an eye on.
So the Ortega Building, I guess, is what we call Macy's now. For instance, when that is occupied, will that just bring the rate down as counting as one? Because it's one storefront on the street?
Right now, because it was one tenant, that's how we're viewing it. It's my understanding they're looking at dividing the ground floor, doing some other retail pieces to the second and third floor. Now, our numbers are only ground floor storefronts. So if they turn that into eight tenants, three are on the ground floor, then our storefront count will go up by three, and we won't count second-floor space.
Okay. So this brings up an interesting, I think, question, I think, for staff too. And we're reporting these numbers and getting updates over time to have that.
And we have a square footage model that shows amount of square footage on the market. And that model, obviously with 146,000 feet from Macy's, changed dramatically in one year, and then smaller changes because most of the time, it's a 2,000-square-foot lease.
So I suppose to me, that would be a more meaningful number because the impact of that larger Ortega Building, Macy's Building versus one individual storefront. So just.
I think we could include a square footage report.
In the future, yeah.
Important to that is, a lot of the time, maybe the spaces that this room, we can control better are the smaller ones aiding a property owner through the process. For a big box to get refilled and move, I mean, that, that may be a little bit of a different process. So just looking at how, how each of those are handled are different things.
Thank you.
Okay. You're set free. Go ahead. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, councilmembers. Just to respond to Mr. Deering's comment about bowling alley-type spaces, there was a bowling alley at 530 State Street, formerly the Sammy's Camera, which is now being leased. And also, I would also add, on our webpage for Accelerate, we've recently added some additional services which are not Accelerate-only. There are citywide services, but since that's kind of a corridor that some people can come through for information, it includes information on recycling and trash volume, right? We can do an assessment of your use and your square footage. Stormwater, we can connect you with people who can do a preliminary analysis, as well as if you have questions about fire sprinklers and such, you can contact the fire department. And this is all free, that everybody should be able to take advantage of. Thank you.
Great. Next section?
Okay, so now, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to give you an overview of where we are with regards to implementing recommendations of the Downtown Economic Vitality Working Group. Again, this group was appointed by, or this group was convened in August of 2018, or following an August 2018 public hearing. And there were many stakeholders that showed up and had ideas of what we needed to be doing in order to improve. Here's a list. We have a dozen individuals that were involved. And I would like to recognize Amy Cooper, who was in large part responsible for creating the exhaustive list that was presented to the council back in, in August of 2018. She's here with us today, as are Dan Farick, Gene Deering, of course, and Anthony Grunbein, who's the Chair of the HLC, also participated. But we had a good cross-section of stakeholders here. And you can see that over the course of the nine months that we met, we had really, really good dialogue. So here are the themes of things that the city can control to, to contribute to vibrancy. Accountability, customer service and courtesy, efficiency, knowledge and oversight. So I'm going to briefly discuss the recommendations. So the, the group is looking for increased predictability. And you can see what we're doing here at the first two bullet points and where we are. We're working to, we're, we're, we kicked off a workflow organizational study today. We, as you know, your council approved a contract to hire the Novak Group, and they are here from Cincinnati. And we're engaging with all land development team staff. Cost of delay course. I actually reframed the conversation from cost of delay that would, into, it's a learning opportunity for staff to look at a project pro forma, to understand what a private individual is looking at in terms of the various aspects of their deal and how much it costs when delay happens. There's time associated with that, with, with the delay. And it's coming out of somebody's pocket, either a property owner or a business owner. And as a result of understanding the value of that time, staff then can begin to empathize and, and understand where the various people are coming from with regards to the, to the application. We're doing this now on an annual basis. We've held two trainings, and we'll continue. As we have new staff coming on, they'll need to go through this training, and we'll ensure that that happens. The group is looking for consistent oversight and accountability for permitting and planning. And you can see that they're looking for staff to adhere to guidelines, for there to be good oversight with, with what's going on. And then that updates are provided to me and the city administrator, and that those are reflected back to the council in terms of our annual performance reports. And the council does receive those on an annual basis with the budget. We call it the P3s. And so you can look for that during your next budget consideration. We're working on that. It's underway. Electronic plan availability. This was a huge deal, even though it might seem to be small. The reason being is that we have a lot of applications going to our design boards on a weekly basis. And the board members, as well as the public, were not able to view those plans unless they came into our office. And as a result of the good work of staff, we were able to get the plans submitted electronically, require plans submitted electronically, and so that board members and the public, again, can look at them ahead of time. We're also looking at adding HLC consent meetings and design review hearing duration estimates on agendas. We are doing the last of those. And we're still considering the consent, the consent items with the HLC. Improve public dialogue on downtown mixed-use development. Your council has, has been engaged in this actively over the course of the last year. We're looking at bringing multi, multi-unit housing into the core of the downtown, and we're engaging actively with the community now. You heard an update from planning staff a couple of months ago, and we're continuing on with that. Included with that is looking at modifying parking requirements and possibly removing them in some cases. Increase over-the-counter permit types with HLC Develop and Distribute Design Standards, and then on down, Include Guide of Pre-approved Furniture Fixure. We haven't started on this at this point, but we are looking at kicking that off at the first quarter of 2020. I wanted to, one of the recommendations there was to look at a standard for, for lighting. And with this project, this is Plaza Granada. So this is the passeo that extends from State Street back to the Granada Theater. And when it's raining, water puddles there. It's dark. It doesn't feel safe. And so the Granada Theater sponsored this project. And they're looking to activate this space and to make it lighter and brighter and to, just to do everything good, really. And with this, we had the HLC give a nod of approval to the lighting. And that is, that was a first in some regards because there has been a hesitancy, if you will, to look at this type of lighting. And so we're, we're seeing this happen. And downtown parking, as the applicant, is continuing that conversation with the HLC, looking for opportunities to provide string lighting in areas that are currently very dark at night in particular. Break down departmental silos. That led me to a Google search. What does it look like when a silo breaks down? And it's a mess. And as we're kicking off this organizational study, we recognize that as we look to break down silos, it's going to require a lot of work because everything gets out on the table. And we're looking at really bringing a better form of communication and teamwork to the land development team. And so we are, we are actively working on this now. As I'm getting into some of these recommendations now, they were multi-part. And so seven A, B, C, D, and so forth. And then there was also an individual that submitted comments after the meeting. I wanted to recognize, I didn't want to change any of the language in, in their recommendations. And so you'll see some back and forth and some, some duplication. So it's not by my design, per se, but in the interest of keeping the recommendations intact.
Ms. Sneddon has a question for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the status on this one, it's relying heavily on the forthcoming Land Development Team Workflow Organizational Study. A lot of these do. And I'm just wondering, do we have a timeline for the completion of that study? And how will that come back to us, or does it come back to us?
Yeah, the study kicked off today. It would, we are targeting it for it to be complete in April. And then we will, once we see what the recommendations, I'm sure you're going to hear recommendations. We're, we're taking a very holistic approach at what needs to be addressed. And I would suspect that we'll be coming to you in the future with recommendations to either changing documents that have been approved by council, possibly looking at the ordinances that we deal with as well.
And then those silos will be put back together, but more organizationally. So we won't be left with this broken-down silo picture.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they can all be cleaned up. So the recommendation for concurrent plan review. We are working on that now. And staff comments limited in scope only to their area of expertise. That's something that we have worked with staff with as well. Encourage third-party plan checking and training and empowerment of staff. We are doing all of these. Reduce the number of appeals. And so the recommendation was to really increase, a steep, looking for a steep increase so that we don't have as many land use appeals coming to the city council. That causes unpredictability. That causes delay, and it, it costs money. And back last year, as part of the budget, we presented to the council how much it would cost if you wanted full-cost recovery. The dollar amount was about $10,000 per, per appeal. That's very expensive. The council opted to moderate that substantially where it's around $700 to $800. I think it's $750. Customer service to, customer service survey to all applicants. We are doing this. People have the ability to provide, to complete a survey online. But everybody who comes to our counter in, at 6:30 Garden Street, if they're paying, when they're paying for a permit, they're handed a hard copy of a survey. And those are, those, the, the, the results are summarized, and they're being provided to me, and I will be providing those to the city administrator. Community development officer. So this was deferred to the Cosmont Study. In essence, we have accomplished that with the appointment of Mark to business liaison. And then Series of 11, looking at an economic development or community benefit zone, ordinance policy to streamline the process, eliminate parking. So this is where the duplication comes in. We're working on these. And they are also, you're going to hear some of these addressed as part of the Cosmont Study as well. Dedicated staff member as liaison. We've done that. And Mark has given you his update on that. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk about his, more about his role and responsibilities and results as business liaison.
Thanks. Thank you, George. Councilmembers, so this is, I'm going to go back a slide. Liaison position was created and appointed in August of 2019. The effective area is State Street fronting, Gutierrez Street to Solas Street. So not exactly the same as Accelerate. Accelerate goes down to Cabrillo Boulevard. And so I'm, I'm available for those businesses fronting State Street in that range, as well as I work with any hotels that might come in or monitor the ones that are already in. Large grocery stores, for example, I've been involved with Sprouts, which is coming to Milpas Street, and Bristol Farms out of Luccumber Plaza. And auto dealerships, kind of monitoring some work going on on Hitchcock out there right now. And then the catch-all, any other projects assigned by my director. And usually, I'm an initial contact for zoning information. I'll assist with plans, middle coordination. So if people say, hey, I'm bringing plans in, I kind of let staff know, all right, they're coming in hot. Let's get ready to move them along. And then I monitor the, the project and the permits, kind of as they're moving through the system, or if they're not. Graphical depiction of the area. That's Gutierrez on the left and Solas on the far right of the yellow bar. And then in the first five or six months, I've had 50-plus contacts, probably closer to 60 now. And they range from just a simple phone call to a lot of phone calls and emails and site visits. It can be, let's see, I'm sorry. So a lot of my involvement can be direct, or it can be a little bit passive where I'm just monitoring. Mostly, it's communication and coordination that I'm kind of stepping into. I'm that middle part of the brain that connects the left side and the right side, the corpus close, and to make sure each view is kind of being heard. And I think that's appreciated on, not only between the city and the public, but also within departments of the city. The first week I was in this role, I got calls from other divisions saying, can we meet and talk about how we can work better together? And we met the next day. So that's kind of my role as the business liaison. And I hope people take advantage of, take advantage of me. That's all I have, George.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, moving on with the final recommendations. Looking at assignment of one planner, one building plan reviewer to each project, and providing training so that those staff are empowered. Yes, we are doing that.
Mr. Buhl, may I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So the status is underway, and in the staff report, it says underway. But I'm wondering if you could give a little bit more detail about how that works, how it's working? Number 12.
You know, I will have building official Andrew Stuffler, as well as Renee Brook.
Thank you.
City council and councilmembers, Sneddon. We, we, early on, we assigned one plans examiner to be our Accelerate Plans Examiner. That's Elizabeth Sorgman. She's a state-licensed architect and a CASP, and a very well-versed plans examiner in the community. She's worked for the county as well as the city. And that seems to be working out well. There are times where we get, you know, five or six State Street applications, Accelerate applications at a time, so they do queue up. But she's able to work through them in a much faster pace than we have when we throw them in the mix with all the rest of the plans that have been submitted. So that seems to be working really well for us in building and safety.
So this is predominantly for the Accelerate Program? And then you have one specific plan checker for that program? Is that?
That's correct. And when she's not busy doing that, she's doing other plan checks, right, to make sure we keep up with our P3s?
Thank you. And then Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez has a question.
Yes, thank you. It's for Mark, if I can ask him a question, please. Are you the liaison for the businesses at the 400 block of State Street?
Counsel, yes, that's correct.
Have you ever been contacted by the property owner of the old Esau's building that's been vacant for about 16 years?
Hmm, can you give me, I don't know the address. I'm going to say no, because that doesn't, that doesn't ring a bell.
Okay.
Yeah. Not for that, for anything there on the 400 block, no.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, Sneddon, I believe the city planner has a different response she wants, she'd like to give you.
Very good. Ms. Brook, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Just on this point in particular, I think another comment that we had coming out of the working group was a broader coordination of plans being reviewed through the plan. working group was a broader coordination of plans being reviewed through the planning division. So, not just Accelerate, but the coordination between design review staff and building plan check staff. So, what we started about 10 or 11 months ago is we now have a pairing of design review staff, so all the design review technicians, single-family design board, HLC, ABR, are paired up with a zoning plan checker. And they review projects from start to finish together. So, because what was happening before is the design review staff might take the initial one or two reviews of the project, get it through design review, and then, they'd submit for building permits. And then, a totally different person was reviewing that set of plans for building permit. And they just would see different things. But now, they're coming together from the very beginning and carrying those through. And we found that that has helped speed up the building permit plan check process quite a bit because it's just continuity and consistency in review from start to finish. And so, that's citywide. That's not just Accelerate.
And then, if I could ask a, oh, thank you, a follow-up question just to that then. So, this applies to more than just the Accelerate. And so, one of the issues that was being addressed was consistency. And so, I'm just wondering, I would hope it never happens, but if it should happen, that someone getting through the process gets paired up with what they would see as an arbitrary process? Are they handled by the same design review staff and plan checker through their whole process if it's not going well? Or is, do they, can they have a different plan checker? Or just, does it ever happen? And how is it addressed?
Well, so, the way it's designed is that you would be paired up with those same people because they're looking, they're, they're most familiar looking for certain issues. Single-family residences have a different, you know, type of review that the plan checker will be looking for versus reusing an industrial building for commercial use or something. So, they have that expertise that they bring to the review. But all of my staff are able to do the plan review if, for whatever reason, it needed a different set of eyes or it was so complex that it might really warrant a different assignment than we would do that.
So, then, that would move towards streamlining because you'd see the same types of projects over and over.
Right. That's the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, councilmember Sneddon, we've, in building and safety, we've always assigned one plans examiner to a project when it came in and they saw it all the way through. The only time there would be a change is if that plans examiner was on vacation or sick, and we'd have someone fill in for them. So, I apologize for focusing on Accelerate, but we never changed our plan check staff through the process. And our supervisors step in when, and this is the same for everybody in the department, I believe. If there's a discrepancy between our plans examiners and how they're viewing a particular application, and it seems arbitrary, Renee and I rely on our supervisors to step in and make sure that those are consistent decisions that are being made and help staff kind of come together to a common correction.
Okay. Marching on. Oh, Mr. Gutierrez, a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it possible to have the same inspector once the permit is issued?
Madam Mayor and councilmember Oscar Gutierrez, it is when we're staffed for that. But we have had absolutely unbelievable inspection workloads and absences. So, we've been doing our best just to cover the inspection calls, which means we end up splitting up inspectors to whole new areas. And that causes the inconsistency from one inspector to the next. We're working on trying to get all of our staffing in order. And in this next budget cycle, we're looking at opportunities to try to resolve that conflict so we can have the same inspector working in the same area, you know, 80% of the time, except for when they're sick, trained, going to training or on vacation.
Good. Mr. Casey will take that up in the budget discussions. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recommendation 13 is to limit plan review comments to proposed scope. I'm going to get into that a little bit more later in the presentation under Cosmont. And then, attendance of staff assigned to PRT and what we call DART meetings. This is essentially where they go over plans. They need to be prepared. They need to attend. In the past, there were issues, and that has been rectified. Streamline for permitting of pop-ups. I can't recall a time in my career, and I would challenge Andrew the same, I never worked so hard to help people find ways to avoid a building permit because we wanted to see these spaces filled. And granted, they were temporary, but the perception is very, very important. We'd much rather have an active space than a vacant space, either boarded up or with paper over the windows. And so, we worked on that. Nina Johnson worked on that very hard, and it's complete. Visioning and master planning, the group was, or pardon me, the status is generally supportive and underway. This, again, is in the context of the multi-unit housing conversation that we're actively engaged in right now. And then, charter amendment to increase the building height. The group did not recommend that. When they, when they realized that there were certain code changes as well as charter amendments, they did not intend to take this to a vote of the people. They were looking for more low-hanging fruit that was, that we could be accomplished by staff.
Let's go ahead. Quick question, and then, let's try to save our questions for the end.
That's my last question. Thank you, Madam Mayor. For, there was just a wording in the staff report that I was, I don't know, trying to understand in reference to number 15. And it says, "HLC is trying to implement a near-century-old vision for downtown. It has zero chance of economic success going forward." In their own words, "HLC is not interested in the economics of the deal, only the aesthetics." It seems like I just was trying to understand.
Yeah. That was, that was, that was one of the comments submitted after the council meeting. And like I said, in the interest of fairness, I did not want to change what was written. But that has, that was received by the council and staff, and I included it in the package.
So, just so I can be clear, it's a comment from whom? Because it looks like it's staff report comment. So, I, is that?
Which page? You're on attachment two, I presume?
Attachment two.
Oh, there are no page numbers here.
Number 15 is at the top of the page before it. And then, it spills over to this page.
Oh, yes. Yes, this, this comment was submitted by Matt Labrie.
Okay. Thank you. So, I was just wondering who to follow up with on that or how to manage that. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
So, with regards to real estate signage, we are working with Downtown Santa Barbara. This is described in attachment two. So, there was concern about oversized real estate signage. And Downtown Santa Barbara has offered to take a peer-to-peer approach as opposed to sending out code enforcement officers to take a more punitive approach if it did not conform to code. And so, they are going out and speaking with the real estate community if signs are oversized. And the city continues to develop window display ministerial design where we have not started work on that yet. This is common courtesy, 24-hour return call policy. And I describe the cost of delay course, as well as ensuring we have out-of-office messages on our voicemails and emails. Consideration was given by council with last budget to reduce the cost to do outdoor dining. You may recall that council gave the nod to waiving up to, I think it was $76,000 in fees that were above the cost of staff providing the service. And we are doing that. All right. So, now, I'm going to transition into a number of the comments that were made or recommendations that were made by the Cosmont companies. In total, there were 12 recommendations. You will see in my subsequent remarks that eight of those are either complete or underway. Four of them are not yet started. And so, I'll get underway with the ones that are complete. We've made it easier for pop-up users. We've facilitated outdoor dining. And out, rooftop terraces are possible. They're not inexpensive typically because a lot of times, buildings are not designed originally for rooftop terraces unless that was envisioned with the original construction. But it can be done. Work that has not started yet, working with landlords on market realities and talking about sidewalk sales and incentivize residential office and hotel reuse vacant commercial And so, these things, these, these, these recommendations that we haven't started work yet, work on yet, I would anticipate that being undertaken by our incoming economic development manager. Consideration of a pedestrian mall along State Street. We haven't started work on that. But something that was pretty remarkable is during the holidays, we, we were able to get the holiday market open in De La Guerra Plaza. It was, it required a lot of coordination between the people who wanted to make it happen in the private sector as well as city staff. But for the first time perhaps ever, we had a tentative, a structure of that nature in that space. And it was, it was a good, it was a good success. So, things that are underway, expand community outreach efforts. You are aware of the public workshops and whatnot that are taking place by city staff to engage on bringing housing and land use policies in the core of the downtown. And then, in the private sector, we also see a lot of activity taking place with the Paseo Nuevo is out talking with people and Pacific Capital Retail, who are the owners or the leaseholders of the Ortega Building, the former Macy's, getting feedback on what should be done there as well. Facilitate infill housing, talking about that, and development of new workforce housing. Your council, over the course of the past year, fine-tuned the, what we called our AUD ordinance in requiring inclusionary units to be either in luffy or constructed as part of the project. And we're, we're seeing that come into the core of the downtown. Fundamentally, review and revamp the zoning and permitting process. And so, this gets to, it strikes back to the essence of the working group's recommendations as well. And I'm going to jump off here just to touch on the question that'll be undertaken as we get into our workflow organizational study on what we do with the scope of review. You heard the recommendation from the working group that we should stick to the written scope of work. And there are pros and cons to that, and I'm going to get into that. So, ministerial, a ministerial permit means that there's no discretionary review. It doesn't go to a design board. It doesn't go to the planning commissioner or the council. It's just something that we, the plans are coming over the counter, and we look at it as staff. The scope of review, so that's something that is written on the plans, and it says what they intend to do with their project. If it's narrow, these are my definitions, it's the applicant-stated scope of work. If it's broad, it means it goes beyond the scope of work. And as I'm getting into this part of the conversation, I want to really encourage the council to keep the big picture in mind here as opposed to getting down in the weeds at this time. The reason being is that there are a lot of nuance, nuances that I'm not going to get into at this point in time because this is part of our study that's underway. But I do want to bring it to your attention because it's something that you've heard over the course of time and previous councils have heard over the course of time. And it's important. So, pros and cons. On the pro side, it's a community benefit of neighborhood and structure preservation. This is for the, for the, for the broad review. Code violations may not be discovered absent public complaint through disclosure or through disclosure by a seller upon sale of the property. And so, if we're doing a broader review, we're pulling the archived plans, we're looking at the, at the entire building and the property. On the con side, it may require additional work at the applicant's expense. It reduces predictability, and it adds to frustration. And it's frequently a complaint that you likely hear as we do as staff. It may also add staff review processing time. In a, in a very generalized survey that I conducted of my counterparts in other communities, you can see that the cities of Santa Barbara and Galita practice, generally practice a broad scope of review, whereas narrow scopes are practiced in the cities of Carpentaria, Ventura, Oxnard, as well as the counties of Santa Barbara and Ventura. And again, there are cases where the scope will go more broad, even in the communities where they say that they have a narrow scope. It depends on the nature of the project. There are so many variations of what can be proposed and, and how the scope can, can broaden beyond what was originally written. But it's, let's say, for example, they're changing a structural member, how they're tying in an addition to an existing building. They may not have provided enough detail to show how the new addition ties into the existing structure. And so, they need to provide more detail. And that could be interpreted as, as going broader in the scope. It's necessary because we know, we want to know that the building is going to be safe for occupancy. So, here, as I said, we practice a generally more broad review. The zoning ordinance and longstanding administrative practice are in this regard. So, we have, we have a code that speaks to this, and a zoning amendment is required to change that. Let me be very clear on this point as well because your council received an email earlier today raising a point that there was, there was a hyperlink on our website that indicated that I would, that we would be coming to you today requesting to initiate a code amendment. That is not the case. That was not in the published agenda. It's not the title of, it's not in the recommendations. We originally were thinking about that, and we decided that it would be more appropriate to vet that thoroughly with stakeholders, with staff, before we bring back any consideration to the city council. So, I apologize for that confusion.
Thank you for that, Mr. Beal.
Mm-hmm. So, I'm going to wrap it up. Where we've been, where we're going, and what visitors to the downtown are looking for. They're looking for clean and safe. They're looking for experience-rich. And they're looking for an authentic place that's designed beautifully. Business and property owners are looking for a clear vision. They're looking for a strategy. They're looking for policies, clear policies that help guide the development of the downtown. And in that, they're looking for predictability and efficiency. They're looking for respect and reasonableness from, from staff. Over the course of now over two years, your council has taken a number of actions that are very admirable and has been very, very engaged in responding to the vacancy rate increase that we saw along the corridor, State Street corridor. You have provided, you have appropriated funds to bring in an economic development manager. You have appropriated funds to bring in an assistant city attorney. You have also, through the attorney's office, I failed to mention that Assistant City Attorney Teva Ostringer sits in many of the design review meetings now. That's an incredible dedication of resource. With regards to homelessness, this is a problem on the State Street corridor. And your council has authorized acceptance of grant funds for, under HEAP. You have appropriated funds to SB Act, Home for Good. And you have appropriated funds for police and ambassadors through the downtown parking. You have appropriated funds for the workflow organizational study. And you have appropriated staff resource for looking at land use policies in the core of the downtown. With regards to the homeless outreach, last week, there was a meeting sponsored, hosted by Hal Conklin at Institutionale, and we talked about the homeless problem. And Jeff Schaefer from SB Act, as well as Brad Fieldhouse from CityNet, were in attendance. And there was lively debate. And there's, there's ongoing concern and, and active complaint with regards to homelessness in the core of the downtown. But there were some really good statistics that I wanted to share with you because between November and December of last year, Jeff Schaefer and his group and Brad and his group, they focused over that two-month period in the 400 and 500 block of State Street. Over that period of time, they engaged with 41 individuals. Seventeen of those individuals are now in case management. And nine of those are housed, three of which are in temporary housing, six of which are now reunified or in permanent housing. That's good. That's really good. And it's a type of activity that needs to continue. On the staff side, we have, we have also been doing a number of things that are shown here. We, the city administrator has convened a, an interdepartmental staff team. We meet on at least a monthly basis to coordinate, communicate, ensure that we're all on the same page in knowing what, knowing what's happening in the core of the downtown. And I mentioned here the stormwater management plan. This is an important permit that the city needs to have from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. It's in essence to comply with the Clean Water Act. We have heard many, many complaints over the course of time. And right now, I know that Creek staff in the Parks and Recreation Department is looking at, they've been listening to stakeholders, conducting meetings, coming up with recommended changes to our permit. And they will be bringing that to you over the course of the next, I believe it's the next four to six months. Staff has conducted two Staff has conducted two design board trainings. One was last September, where we gathered with all the members of our design boards in the, in the Get Hard Room over at 630 Garden Street. And it was a really good opportunity for the city attorney and staff to lay out the legal framework under which the design boards operate, and it also provided an opportunity for a lot of just informal back-and-forth conversation with various aspects of who they are, what they do, and how we can be doing things better. The most recent training took place last Thursday, no, Friday, where HLC Chair Anthony Grunbein and Nicole Hernandez, our urban historian, conducted a walking tour throughout the core of the downtown to look how, Anthony will talk about it more, but how, how mixed use housing, or not mixed use, but multi-unit development can and does work in our urban context. We have, as I mentioned, brought in electronic plans, we're looking to improve and are work, actively working on improving project processing. We have a customer, more of a customer service focus. We're still a regulatory agency, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we need to have an attitude of indifference. And then finally, with, we, we have our business liaison with Mark's appointment. Positive trends, increased use of staff services. We've had a number of people call and ask for, for meetings to go over to understand if they can use a building with regards to accessibility, fixture count, stormwater, and the other aspects that Mark listed. Improved customer relations, as I mentioned, with predictability and project processing. The downtown, in terms of the number of storefronts, you're, we're 90% occupied. So as opposed to looking at 10% vacant, turn that number around, that's, it's not where we want it to be, but we're, we're getting, we're getting there. And over the course of the past two years, the council has shown a sustained commitment in terms of staffing and financial resource, and we will continue to work on this until we can say, we've, we've reached a point where we're, we're good. We're not there yet, but we're committed to it. That concludes my report.
Our sheet had a couple of more, okay.
Pardon me, that doesn't include, pardon, I have recommendations, that your council directs staff to continue to work on implementing the downtown working groups' recommendations and the Cosmont's, Cosmont's recommendations, and that we continue to implement Accelerate. And it dawned on me that I forgot to mention that at, at the last update, the council acknowledged that a little additional push was necessary on Coast Village Road. Coast Village is doing exceptionally well, as I mentioned in my report. We've had a, a couple resorts open up after the, the mud flow, being the San Ciudad Ranch and the Four Seasons, and then with the Miramar Rosewood. They're literally bussing people onto Coast Village Road, and so we see a lot of good economic things happening on, on that corridor. So it's no longer necessary as part of the program.
Very good. We'll take questions from the council. We have a handful of speaker slips, and if we could make this the question period and do your comments after. The purpose of that is that we need to hear from the public before making deliberative comments. I would ask you for that discipline.
Madam Mayor.
Mr., oh, go ahead.
If, if I may, the Chair of the HLC, Anthony Grunbein, he, he may like to add something.
Well, Mr. Grunbein, come to the podium, please. We've got to hear from you.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council.
Thank you.
Although I like Matt Labrie, those words from HLC hurt. So, okay, so some of the things that, and I, and I've been part of, I want to speak for you, to you from HLC, I've also was on the, the revitalization working group, and now the objective design standards. So I've, it's been good to see the sort of the behind-the-scenes, a lot of the work the city's been doing. I've been very impressed with a lot of the, what I see as the ground that's being made, which is, which is great. A couple of things I did want to hit on, the electronic plans. When I first started HLC, that was asked for, you know, that many years ago, and it's great that we finally got it done this year. So I know my fellow members have been very thankful about that, being able to look at the plans ahead of time. It's very difficult to, to give good feedback and to form an opinion when, when you just are looking at it for the first time, when it comes before you. So that's been a huge benefit. The, there, as mentioned, the having Teva Ostringer and having council on, at the meetings is, I think, have been a great benefit. It's really allowed us to have someone to turn to when those, when there's a sort of crunch time, is to look at what really are the rule, the playbook, the rules that everyone needs to be playing by, which has been a great help. We've also been working on training, as well as mentioned, both as a whole group, which has been really good, HLC and ABR and SFTB, and then the recent one we did with the downtown, going through and looking at our different, sort of all the great architecture that we currently have, which is a great model for everything from the Libero Building, which is massive, all the way down to bungalow courts, which are about as small as it gets, and all which can be used to add housing. So that has been a really good, I've seen a lot of great movement this year. And the, on the light side of things, we're also looking at some of the, the possibility for future sort of objective light standards, and HLC is very interested in what can, what could happen there. So that's sort of an overview from the HLC and, and that side of things. As, now sort of taking off my HLC hat as a private member, a member of the public, I did, as I wrote to you at the end of last year, I do think that we've covered with a lot of the sort of front burner issues that the city's dealing with, vacancies. We're in process, and we have a good plan going for those, and we need to keep working on that and keep refining that. And I, I see a lot of great improvement, but I think we also need to be really looking at that long-term plan as well, 100-year plan, look at what our, what we can do in terms of a form-based code with what we have as our best examples, and how we can work that into it. And so I'll be, I'd be happy to discuss that more with you as well, especially as budgetary things are being discussed right now. I think it's a great opportunity to really plan for the future, which I think is actually could be implemented within the next couple of years. So anyways, with that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions you have, or I'll...
I had Mr. Jordan and Mr. Friedman on the stack. Did you guys have, did you all have questions for Mr. Grunbein? No, you have a question for Mr. Grunbein. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm so much interested in this long-term 100-year plan and really want to see it happen. What do we need to do? You mentioned budgetary coming up. How, what is the process to, to getting this underway?
Absolutely. So I think that Santa Barbara, and I think is one of the cases, as most of you probably know, that I think that it's one of the best cities in the country, objectively speaking. It's a really great city, from an architecture and urban's point of view, having lived in Europe and the European city model of all based in the person, and sort of traditional plazas and squares and, and grids and, and paseos as well. So it works, it has an amazing thing going there. That being said, I don't, it's, it's so special and important, it can also get screwed up, so I take it extremely seriously. I don't think there's very many people that could actually pull off, the best of the best is what Santa Barbara deserves in terms of traditional planning. I could give you a few recommendations I have, or the few that I think that could actually do this as a, that have done this before for traditional cities, and it really needs to be at a caliber that's incredible. We have a lot of great local architects, and, and we have a lot of great talent, which I think everything needs to be worked together. We need to work together with, through design charrettes, through public input, and we basically need to have a series that develops our long-range, 100-year, 50-year, 20-year plan for the city, how to add density in the right spots, how to save room for transportation and public transportation, so we can actually get a city that's not based in the car, or dependent on the car, and then how to use the best examples of what we have in the right neighborhoods. And I think that can be developed. I, I think it's probably about, I'm going to be optimistic and say a year process.
Mr. Grunbein, I'm going to stop you there.
Sure.
Because this is a question, I think, that could be directed to staff as well. Mr. Casey, can I ask you to take a stab at it? How would we, this is a good discussion, we need to get back on track on downtown specifically, but how do we integrate this into our conversation workload, planning staff?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and council members, that's exactly right. It's a, it's a workload priority issue to determine when council wants to take that on in lieu of looking at other things. My recommendation is you've just initiated a pretty aggressive housing downtown program of amending our codes, and I would recommend seeing that through. But then if this is a priority that would kind of follow up as a next step, then we would need that direction from council, from you all, to dedicate the staff resources and the financial resources. I think this will cost money as well to do what Mr. Grunbein is talking about. So it's a, it's a workload priority planning process. We have those meetings every six months with the city council and planning commission. We're still working through kind of that priority list that came out of Plan Santa Barbara. This would need to be inserted in somehow, and, and come at the expense of something else, but that's where you all give us that direction.
Right, and we are having a council retreat in March, so that would be a good place to talk about the vision and how we would go about doing that.
Thank you. I'm done, and Mr. Grunbein, we can continue conversation offline. Thank you.
Mr. Gutierrez, did you have a question for this gentleman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
How does the HLC respond to abandoned properties or neglected properties on State Street in particular?
So, it all depends on the project that comes before us. So we only react on a, there's two ways, I guess, one other way we could react. Buildings that are old and reach a caliber of integrity, that they have enough of their original historic fabric, and have the argumentation for making them a historic structure of merit, they may or may not, whether they're abandoned or not, they might be analyzed just to see if they're an actually a historic resource, if they haven't already been designated. Some of them have already been designated. A number are on the potential list, but they haven't been actually thoroughly vetted and, and reports written. So that's one way in which it might come before us, is if someone, it could be Ms. Hernandez, or it could be one of the HLC commissioners, says, I think this building is a historic building, and it should be reviewed to be put on historic structures as a, as a structure of merit. That's, that's one way we might review it, even if it's abandoned. If it's abandoned and doesn't have a project coming before us, we're not going to see it. We're, we're only going to take it on a, this should be deemed a historic structure of merit, or a landmark in that case, but, so yeah. So we don't really interact with them unless they, they come before us as a project and they want to do something with it. And that's only if they're wanting to do something that actually affects the exterior. So.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Were you talking about 100-year study, Councilmember Sneddon? I'd love to be, I would love to be involved with that upfront, because I got to get over my skepticism that you can do anything like that for 100 years out in a dynamic society. So, Mr. Aguilar, the, the broad, and I forget, this could be your, Mr. Buell, I'm sorry, but the broad versus narrow type of carrot you're dangling to talk about at another time, is that residential and commercial, or are you just talking commercial?
Both.
Perfect. Okay. And then, this is for you, Mark, definitely. Do we actively pursue serial vacancies? ESOS came up earlier, the second one up at the bottom of State Street there above the freeway underpass, and I, I want to say it's been 10 years, maybe. So do we, but do we active, do we actively take a role and go out and figure out, Mr. and Mrs. Jones live in Wisconsin, and they own the building, and what can we do to help them get it rented for stuff like that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, we are hoping that that's going to be undertaken by the economic development.
The new position, okay. So I suspected as much. And then, I think I've mentioned this before once or twice at those, every, twice-a-year meetings, but are, are we still not lurking somewhere in the background with an idea of a maintenance standard ordinance in El Pueblo Viejo that would address standards, but also address vacancy upkeep? Keeping a vacant storefront active, keeping it clean, keeping it kept up?
Mr. Casey, you have an answer?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, there's been periphery discussion, but no direction from council to pursue something. There's been talk about a vacancy tax of some sort.
I don't like that word.
I, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that, but there have been just those conversations, but there's been no direction from council to take.
All right, so I could put it on my list. And then, Mr. Aguilar, when you were going through, you had a slide with liaison stuff that included stuff all over, like the Bristol Farms Market. Never a thought, or are we not including large, presumably AUD rental projects anywhere in town, or particularly in the CBD, as being on that list also?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, to this point, we have not been looking at residential-type projects. We're really looking for projects that, outside of the CBD, projects that would generate substantial sales tax or revenue for the city.
Okay, so that would be another, something appropriate to put on my list to make a case for that they do have a nexus to a commercial type of use, depending upon location, probably, right? In my mind.
Yes.
Does that make sense? Yeah, okay.
And I would qualify that by saying, in, in your mind, that would need to be thoroughly discussed, I'd imagine.
Scary thing, I know.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, just a little distinction. Part of the emphasis of designating Mr. Aguilar as the business liaison is to try to address the vacancies on State Street.
Right.
And a lot of the problems that come up there are the change-of-use issues. When you're going from one use to another, it triggers different code requirements and that sort of stuff. AUD projects, for the most part, are kind of starting from scratch, and so you don't have those complex code issues. It's a new mixed-use building, build to the code. And so we can talk about whether we want to add in an AUD project to get some sort of extra service, but I think the issues are a little bit different from the questions and liaisoning.
Perhaps, but I was struck by the geographic breadth of where he goes to work on some of those things, so Lacumbra Plaza, or just the generic large hotels, which would just say, we know they're a revenue generator, but so are 200 Amazon workers living in downtown, right? And the ability to house them. So, okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of going back to the narrowing of the, of the scope issue, is that also, I know we're, we're going to, my understanding from Dave is we're going to have staff looking at that and coming back with information, including what other jurisdictions are doing. But is that something that's also under consideration in our consultant, that we've hired, the NOVAC consultant, that's looking at all of our processes?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, yes, that will be thoroughly vetted in that study.
Great. My other question is, in the staff report, it mentions that from Cabrillo to Gutierrez, there's only a 6% vacancy, but this Accelerate program goes all the way down there, and yet in Coast Village, it's at 5%, so we took it out. Can you account for what the differences are just generally between that part of this program and this part, and if it might be worth it to allocate more resources towards the parts that still have the higher vacancy? Or, and then why do we think that that area has 6% when the rest of it doesn't?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, you, I, it was a couple of updates ago where we talked about bringing the Accelerate program up to the 300 block essentially at the freeway, and there was concern from one representative that showed up at the council meeting, said, you know, we really would like to remain in the program. If you look at the number of vacancies that are on the, south of the freeway, it's very few, and so it does not require a lot of staff resource in order to help facilitate business development in that, in that geographic area as well. However, if you wanted to direct, the project area could be changed.
I'm fine with that, with that answer. I just raised it, but what do we think are the, the factors that lead to that part of it being 6% and across the freeway, and it's almost double? And is, is it our processes that we're looking at? I just want to make sure that if we're seeing things there that facilitate better vacancies or a better vacancy rate, that we're already, in all that we're doing, we're, we're implementing those? Are we looking at best practices down there? Do we, basically, do we have lessons to be learned from down there that we can translate further up?
Yes, I've, I've asked Mr. Dearing to, to, to step up, because he, he addressed this at one point in one of his updates on the real estate market.
Mr. Dearing, go ahead.
The, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, the health of the funk zone and the new Californian hotel, you look at the amount of commercial real estate near the beach in Santa Barbara, it's, it's doing well, and there's less product in that area that's not brand new, so I would, I would agree that most of Mark's time will be focused further up State Street, because it's, it's less complex down there. complex down there.
Okay.
Yeah, and there are lessons for us from down there that we can apply further up. That's basically my question, is have we looked at what the issues down there, and we're applying any lessons to be learned to help on Upper State, in addition to all that we're doing?
If I could jump on that, the average age of those buildings, because it's the new hotel, the Harborview Hotel, it's just newer product for the most part, so it's a lot more simple to repurpose a building that's 20 years old or 50 years.
Okay, that, I guess that answers my question there. I just saw that stat, so thank you, that's very helpful.
Thanks. We're going to go to public comment. Anna Marie Gott, you're first, you'll be followed by, and Mr. Reyes, you're giving her your time, so you've got five minutes. Mr. Canal, Mr. Birdy, Mr. Reed, and our Mayor Pro Tem, Sneddon's going to take over the meeting, thank you.
Good afternoon, or evening. I would like you to take a look at page 67. Ministerial Plan Check Scope of Review, City of Santa Barbara. Zoning Ordinance and Long Standing Administrative Practice, zoning ordinance, I mean zoning amendment required to change. Wasn't that what I was asking about earlier? And if we're going to actually make changes to a ministerial process, then shouldn't that be noticed? And shouldn't we know exactly what that means? It's a valid question, and it's the question that I actually asked in my email, because when you looked at the actual agenda, you saw different items. When you looked at the printed-out agenda, or the agenda in the, the agenda packet, you saw three items, and they were a recommendation by staff. However, when you actually went to review everything in the staff report, you saw two things. The first thing that you saw was the supporting documents, which were quite, which actually had the statement of request to initiate a zoning ordinance text amendment in it, and then you actually had a staff report that talked about that on page four. So I am a little bit confused. Staff says that they were originally going to go ahead and do that. We have a document that actually says online that that's what you're going to do, and then now you have this, but staff now claims that there's not going to be a zoning amendment. So I'm just a little confused, and I think anyone who actually read the report or looked actually at the website would be confused. And this is all about process. We don't have a clear process in the planning department, and it's detrimental, not just to residents, but yes, to property owners and businesses. One thing that the PowerPoint talked about was the working group. Which residential neighborhood or neighborhood association actually sits on the working group, or even has meetings with the working group? If you are desiring housing downtown, shouldn't you be responsive to the long-term issues of housing next to businesses with noise at night, or lighting at night? Do you want to put a rooftop bar next to a brand-new housing project? Maybe not, because that's going to keep the neighbors up at night and cause nuisance issues long-term. Inside of the PowerPoint, we talked about appeals, and how the appeal fees actually might be going up. Let me remind you that oftentimes, projects go to the ABR or the HLC, which have not been properly vetted. Let me remind you about the Salvation Army project, which was not properly vetted, yet went through ABR, and a PRT could have been produced in advance. People would have known that they couldn't actually place that project on that site. Other projects include 533 East Mitchell Trenna, which was put on the agenda of the ABR, missing a sidewalk, and saying that all of the commercial parking was going to be accommodated through lift, lift parking, for a medical office building without a valet. So a PRT, which is a Pre-Application Review Team Report, for anyone who doesn't know what that is, that would have had everyone looking at the ordinances, determining that setback is needed because it doesn't meet it in the zone, a sidewalk is needed, and we can't put the type of parking places in a lift for medical office building without a valet. We don't have a really great process, and our residents, it appears, are now going to have to pay a higher appeal fee because a project that is unvetted gets thrown into their neighborhood, and they cannot get the ABR or staff to even look at the proper ordinances because no one seems to actually communicate.
Ms. Scott, I believe your time is up.
Thank you.
Steph, would you like the opportunity to respond? You did clarify about the text amendment, if you could clarify that for us.
Just to be clear, we are not, at this point, asking the council to take any action relative to a code amendment. It is not in your published agenda, it is not in the staff report, it's not in the recommendation, so I'll just put that to rest. With regards to the other aspects that Ms. Gott raised with regard, regarding the process, we're doing our workflow organizational study to repair that process. It needs work. Finally, the last point that she was making, refresh my memory if you, if you will, there was one last point.
You don't actually need to respond to all of them, it was that one in particular that I was asking for, but, yeah, thank you. And next, we have Jim Canal, followed by Richard Birdy.
Just a few comments. I have almost 500,000 square feet of downtown space, represent almost a little over 300 tenants, and I will tell you that as optimistic as the gentleman over here present their case, it's not the case. We go through the battle with the city every day, on every project. It's not working, it's not successful, it's detrimental. I've had to put several projects on hold because we budgeted X, and by the time the city's done reviewing the process, it's X three times. They don't work with us, they don't cooperate with us, they don't find a solution to get things done. Part of what you see in Santa Barbara, I'll give you an example of Victoria Court, we want to completely renovate that, but with all the code enforcements that we had to comply with just to get it done, we'd lose all the restaurants that we have on that, in that, in that block, in that, in that project. Restaurants that have been there for 30 and 40 years. You know, you can't have, you have too many outside seats, not enough bathrooms. It's not like you have too many seats and outside bathrooms, here's what we can do to rectify the problem. It never gets solved. So, the project doesn't get done, the tenants don't get a new building, and the building stays the same. Net, nothing. That's the story with downtown Santa Barbara. You ask why the occupancy is different on the lower end of State Street? It's real easy to tell why. Walk the streets of Santa Barbara, look at the landscaping, look at the street, the lower end of State Street, below 101, the landscaping is clean, the streets are clean, it's well-lit, wide sidewalks. You go up the street to Santa Barbara to Victoria Court, or Victoria Avenue, there isn't one block that isn't blighted. I challenge you to walk the street and look at the landscaping. You want to change the vacancy and occupancy in Santa Barbara? Invest in Santa Barbara, invest in the infrastructure, invest of what you want us to accomplish, which is to get an occupancy rate that is conducive to the city, but conducive to the landlords. You don't have a product that you've given us to work with. I challenge Gene, over here. We bring tenants in all the time, "Oh, this place is a mess, there's homeless people, the landscaping's rundown, it's not clean, it's, it's consisting with lots of different plants that don't even, weren't even part of the original agenda." It is not representative of what Santa Barbara should be. I challenge you to take a look, and you decide yourself what you think of downtown Santa Barbara and the landscaping in the streets, because safety, security, and providing infrastructure is your job. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Canal. Richard Birdy, followed by Barrett Reed.
It's a long day. Thank you all, thank the staff. I have a couple of things. I support Jim 100% in what he's saying about the landscaping, the sidewalks. People now on the sidewalks, just, just, the restaurants want to be able to sit out on the sidewalks for some of their customers. On the 600 block of State Street, the sidewalks are not wide enough. Part of the reason is, is the landscaping. Big, big planters that are not well-maintained actually block the stores from the street. If they weren't there, the, there could be more space for the people with restaurants. There could be easy access when you have a farmer's market down there to come into either side of State Street when there's activity going on at the farmer's market. What I wanted to talk about was parking and your staff. The first time I came before you, I was very upset with your staff. I had a terrible experience with an old property down on Gutierrez Street, 12,000-square-foot building that, prior to my ownership, 40 years ago, somebody built something there without a permit. What they did, it was a flying roof, they built three walls against the building using that roof to make two storage rooms, so they had three walls on one side, three walls on the other. They were not permitted. I elected to tear them down. There was a doorway that became a window, it wasn't up to current code, it was put in there over 40 years ago. There was a stairway that was, it was permitted, but it wasn't accurately made according to today's standards. I had to fix that. Small things. I could have done that work in a week. I spent 100 and some thousand dollars on studies in three years of my life. The way I finally got a permit was with the help of George Buell. Otherwise, I think I'd still be caught in a quagmire of that old building. That's insanity. I think they're trying to work with us, at least the senior staff. The parking, you talk about parking like it's unlimited, it's not. We have plenty of parking because we have no business. If we become vital again with business, we're going to have to need the parking. We're building 18 units, give them nine parking spaces, or whatever, one unit per parking space. Most apartments today have two people in them. You're not going to get rid of the cars, the cars are going to become electric or hydrogen, we're going to get rid of fossil fuel, we're always going to want to move around. You're not going to get rid of our outside communities, where we have to drive to. We need to keep our parking. You can't get rid of it. And so, if you do, you'll destroy the economic vitality of downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Next, we have Barrett Reed, followed by Carrie Kelly.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, I think Mr. Reed had to leave, but he wrote comments that he was hoping that people would read.
Oh, he did. I will read his comments. The business liaison has been incredibly responsive and informative, vastly improved communication and customer service, good stopgap until the economic director, pre-application services, support continued fee waivers and any additional promos of incentives for services. As an applicant, these services have been valuable on design review, priority placement has been working, and completeness review should be more carefully accessed. Thank you. So then Carrie Kelly, followed by Bob Stout.
Hello, thank you, I was going to say Madam Mayor, but it's Madam Pro Tem, and City Councilmembers, I really appreciate your sustained commitment for downtown, and I wanted to speak to our organization's place in these discussions. First, though, I just want to echo what Mr. Grunbein said, and that's correct, that we need to work on a long-term vision, and that's become a part of our new strategic plan as well. As we know, the business of downtowns has changed rapidly, and downtown Santa Barbara recognizes that it's time for us to take on a leadership role in overall economic vitality issues. In support of the recommendations from the Cosmop Plan and other reports that the city has invested in, we have put together a strategic plan that includes submitting a plan for business retention and recruitment, a substantial expansion of special events, partnering more fully with all the organizations and partners with a stake in downtown, on doing all of this while working in conjunction with the city to better manage the clean and safe aspects of our downtown. Our brand-new Board of Directors met on Saturday to discuss our future, and there was so much excitement and enthusiasm for this new expanded strategic plan, that I'm still fielding emails from them three days later with lists of ideas of what we can do. We all want an active and vibrant downtown with the thriving businesses and authentic experiences. I think by working hand-in-hand with the city and community partners and with community development, and with downtown Santa Barbara taking on more responsibility for the current and future success of our business, core business district, downtown Santa Barbara will flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And followed by Bob Stout, and then our final speaker, Amy Cooper.
It's been too long. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and councilmembers, I'm happy to be here in front of you again. And I wanted to come because, as George said, I was part of that initial document that was written, and then I was on the Workforce Committee, so it's good to see things moving forward. And I'm very excited about the workflow study and see what comes out of that, because I'm also still hearing anecdotally that there's more room for improvement, for sure. And I'm excited about the Economic Development Manager position, but I just wanted to speak to the fact that that position will have responsibilities citywide, and I think it's a bit much, we're kind of throwing a lot of things like, well, that person will do this, and that person will do this, there's just no way that one person can do everything that needs to be done. So with that in mind, I've been having a lot of discussions as, because I've been so vocal, and people have been coming to me and asking me what's going on downtown, what should we do? So I've been meeting with Weave, and meeting with Visit Santa Barbara, and all different people who are interested in the same thing, like you all are, which is a dynamic downtown. And the idea was, we really need, who's, who's going to kind of own economic development above and beyond what the city can do? And I think that should be downtown Santa Barbara. So I've been a part of the strategic planning process with Carrie, to really come up with, that we're not just the people who do First Thursday and the Christmas Parade, that we're really taking on more of a leadership role. And I'm excited about what we've come up with, and this, these new board members, we had 11 new board members, and people who are really, have that same vision of wanting to break out of what we used to do, and what do we need to do now in five years, in 10 years, in 20 years, to have the downtown we need? Because again, we're still talking a lot about kind of the problems, and what are we fixing the problems? We still need to have a vision for the future. So with that in mind, the, the, I wanted to bring up the silos, because it's just so interesting that you had that visual. When I first started getting involved in all of this city stuff, the number-one thing I heard from everyone is, "The problem with Santa Barbara is its silos. It's this group, and this group, and this group, and nobody talks to each other." And I feel like finally, we're all coming to the table, or at least that's what I'm experiencing. So now, I'm on the Steering Committee of SB Act with Jeff Schaefer's group, I'm on the Executive Committee of Sustainable Change Alliance, which is a great group in town that wants to invest in downtown, and then everything going on with DSB. I just feel like we're at a crucial moment, but we can't take our eye off the ball, so it's good to say we're moving forward. But as far as vacancy, both sides next to me just got leased, and this is another thing to focus on, not just recruitment, but retention. Each, and this is not exact, because I shouldn't get into exact numbers, but each of those two tenants are paying 6,200 a month, and I'm paying 9,000. So, and I asked my landlord to take me to market rate, and he said, "No," because he doesn't have to, because I have a lease. So we still have, a long way to go, it's more than just filling It's more than just filling spaces. It's how do we keep the businesses that we want to keep, bring the new ones that we want to have, and make sure they're successful? So thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cooper. It is now to the council, if we have any discussion or comments that we'd like to make. Councilmember Friedman.
All right. I guess I'm going to go first, even though I was slow on the draw. Well, first, I just want to thank members of the public who spoke tonight, but also, in particular, I want to thank our staff and all the work that you've been doing over the last two years, because it was about two years or so ago, 18 months, when these issues started coming to us, and we had some pretty intense council meetings. And we've come a long way, and I think even though we have our challenges ahead of us, we can look to the successes we had and know that we need to continue to move in that direction. We're in a lot better place than we were two years ago. In particular, I'm pleased to hear about the focus on kind of repurposing or revisioning downtown organization, Ms. Cooper and Ms. Kelly speaking to that. Because we can't do it alone at the city. We have a part of it. I think there was a chart in the presentation that said we all have our different parts. So to the extent that we have the business community and the partners to help, would be a long way, especially as we move into a new phase of downtown and looking at the What I also want to talk about is the vacancies, as we learned today, are complex. The city has its role in the permitting process, and we are moving forward, and we have been. This council over the past couple of years has taken the issues seriously that were presented, and we've allocated a lot of resources to try to address that and come up with a vision. We have a workflow study that's going on that will hopefully address a lot of the issues that have come up, so we can understand that. We have the Cosmont Study. And I do want to take a moment regarding the Cosmont Study. There were those that said we didn't need it, but here's the way I look at it, is that one, it came out of the work group, and it was a presentation, or it was a recommendation, I believe it was number one, if I recall, to do a study. But the importance of it is that it captured, at the moment in time, the sentiments of the community, it captured what we were doing, and it's a publicly accessible document that was heard at the council that provides a foundation for us to have metrics that we can measure ourselves against. So that's why it's important. I see Mr. Former Mayor Conklin out there, and we've talked about a similar challenge 30 years ago with Paseo Nuevo in the discussions, but I can tell you, there probably aren't very many people who can name the council from back then, except for probably Mr. Conklin. And we don't know what those discussions were, but it worked out. But we have something now that, in perpetuity, has those conditions that we can measure ourselves against. And we've seen today that it has produced some direction for us. The other part of it is that I'm encouraged, Mr. Dearing's report that some of the rents are coming down in some areas. I hope that they continue to come down, because just as we've heard from a public comment today that there are still issues within the community development department that are out there, I hear from individuals that they just can't afford the rents. And these are local businesses. So there is a point at which we can do our share, our organizations can do theirs, and the landlords can find those price points to help promote local businesses, because there is a point at which local businesses will be able to come back downtown. And I was at the Radius Forum back a few months ago, and it did talk about how the rents came down in some areas, and there's more local businesses that are interested in them. And those are the businesses we want to promote. I think all of us can agree to that. And then, in terms of investment, I think it was, it's a valid point. We do need to invest in our infrastructure down there, in the downtown. And two big projects that I'm hopeful, and I see that will benefit us, are the Library Plaza, which has final design approval. So the fundraising for that is going forward, and that's a key piece in our arts district, but also in our infrastructure, because it ties in, which we saw today, the back of the Granada, tie in Library Plaza, it ties into La Arcata, and then it creates a space where we can have street closures that bring people downtown, such in the arts district for special events. We also have the renovations that we're looking at for De La Guerra Plaza, and whether or not we have a farmer's market or some type of other activity. Because if we're going to close the streets, we have to have, what is the activity to close it? And so we want to have the programming that goes with it, which I think our partners are looking at, too, because you don't want to just close the street to close the street. So there's a lot that's going on, there's a lot more we need to do, but I think we're going in the positive direction. And in particular, the economic development manager position that we have will give us that person that has that expertise that we can work with. So we're investing, our community partners are investing, the public's still engaged. And even though we have our challenges, we're all heading in the right direction, and I appreciate everyone's commitment to downtown.
Thank you, Councilmember Friedman. And if we could hear now from, I made a note, Councilmember Harmon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I will keep my comments brief, because I'm going to echo much of what Councilmember Friedman said. I hear the public commenters today, as well as business owners that I connect with and speak with, that this change hasn't been overnight, it hasn't been immediate, and it hasn't been perfect. But wow, have you guys made a huge, huge effort, a huge step in really trying to up the business-friendly fundamentals? And I think that's what you were talking about here today, those fundamentals. That means responsiveness, that means pragmatic and reasonable decision-making. And again, I think we all have acknowledged, as did you, as did the folks that spoke at public comment today, that this is an ongoing process, it's ongoing learning, and that it isn't something that we can get right like that overnight. But I'm very appreciative of the efforts that your office has made to hear us, I think, and hear the community when they say that we want you all to be empowered, to be flexible in your decision-making, to the extent that that's possible in light of our ordinances, in light of our shared commitment to a really beautiful community. So I am really happy to see where we are and where we're going, because I think what I've heard from you and what I hear from everyone who's engaged in this process is that on the right track, and let's keep pushing. To that point, and I think this was very well-stated by Ms. Cooper, you know, it's time to move on to Phase Two of this project, and a lot of what we, or what I envision, rather, as this Phase Two is coming with the economic development manager. So this person has just a mountain of expectations on them, and I so appreciate the engagement from community, because from the community, downtown Santa Barbara, various other partners, because no man is an island, particularly when it, or woman, when it comes to revitalizing State Street, really doing anything, but particularly, this is a big job. I will say, though, I think it's clear from the conversations we've all had and the conversations that you have had with us today, that while our expectations are significant, we all in the city are ready to use every lever at our disposal to make sure that that person is successful, that while we want the best and we expect the best, and there's a lot that we're asking of this person, we are all equally committed to giving 100% right along with them to see it getting done. So I'm really excited to move into this next phase and to be talking about what creative ideas we can bring to the table, and now that we've got the fundamentals to move on to kind of the fun stuff. So I will just close by thanking staff, thanking all the folks that have stayed engaged and continued this process with us. It has been a long one, but I really believe, in the end, it's going to be worthwhile. And as the representative to downtown, I will say, my neighbors in particular are so grateful. We are really, really grateful for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Harmon, and Councilmember Jordan.
Madam Mayor Protem, if I may, just seems like a good chance to follow up on that. I totally agree with the comments from the public and from you all, that the economic development managers can be a great resource to the community, but it really takes those partnerships, and so I totally agree with that. Just want to give you a quick status on the recruitment. It's going very well, and we're down to just the very final stages. I hope to be able to make an announcement within the next week or so. It's a very solid recruitment, and we're very close to bringing someone on board, so stay tuned.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Casey, and Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Protem. So I would echo both sets of comments I heard, but I'm sure everybody knows I'm a little bit cup-half-empty at times. I, too, hear anecdotal stories out there, and bristle at the anecdotal stories, because they're anecdotal, but I know eventually, they probably have some truth in them. And I would continually remind us that we're not there yet. We need to continue to improve on our ability to work with the private sector to benefit us all, that this isn't, we've gotten to where we are, and we take, kind of start coasting and take our foot off the accelerator. We need to continue to accelerate and move forward. I used to annoy the tourism people to no end years ago, before they did their T-bid, by saying that they were just hiding behind the aura of Santa Barbara. They weren't doing any work, weren't doing any investment, as Mr. Canal mentioned, in getting people to come, and sooner or later, other communities caught up to the look and the feel and go somewhere else, and we had to react. I would pose to you, I think downtown Santa Barbara in particular is at that spot right now, that we just can't hide behind where Santa Barbara anymore. And it takes a community partnership and a level of participation by the city, a nimbleness, an openness. I'm sorry, Mr. Canal left, because that's a, I'm going to bite that apple that you didn't plant today, but the whole talk on broad versus narrow scope and how we move people into buildings that already have that kind of use and are already there, I think is a conversation we need to have, because it's an old city with old bones and constraints, and unless you want to blow out half a block and redo it, I think you're in trouble. I kind of analogize that to living in a neighborhood, and you either come to terms with your neighbors who have boats in their driveway, or campers in their backyard, or you don't. And I think we need to come to terms with some of the things that are on the ground, and ourselves need to adapt to those, rather than force developers or projects or owners to come to terms a different way. There are a couple of things I wanted particularly mention that I heard today. Strings or non-traditional lighting as one-offs, and all over these Paseos and stuff, I think, are not well-received by HLC in particular, but I think they are great activators. I mean, there's examples right across the street from us, there's examples this way that I think can be activated. And I know from experience on Planning Commission that rooftop terraces are also not seen very positively by HLC. So Planning Commission has actually approved a couple of those over-concerns of HLC.
Do you mind if I just interrupt really quick, Mr. Jordan? We actually had kind of a concept meeting with HLC about string lightings. We had some up over the holidays and asked them to take a look. They were pretty positive in their response, and so we're going to work with them, and you'll see them rolling out more, so I feel a good momentum on that.
I, too, am looking forward to the economic development position, person. I share Ms. Cooper's concern that we triage accordingly, where the biggest hurt is first, before we turn that person loose on a wider scope. And I want to hold that idea of a maintenance standard, something or ordinance in EPV in my pocket for a discussion at another time, because whether vacant or not, there are still examples. In fact, downtown Santa Barbara did, as part of the retail study, I think, however many years ago that was, there is actually a picture board somewhere that Greg Hart did at that time to actually give examples of businesses, both vacant and thriving, that looked terrible on the front. And again, it was part of this idea that you could hide behind the draw of Santa Barbara, and they will come regardless. Don't think that's true anymore, and I think we need to up the game. So I will still, again, thank staff. I think you've made great strides. I will echo the comments you heard from Ms. Harmon and Mr. Friedman, but I'm still looking hard at keeping that pressure on the process and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan. I will make my comments, and then after that, we'll be looking for a motion, if there is one, to move the staff recommendation to direct staff to continue to implement downtown working group and Cosmont recommendations, and to continue implementation of accelerate program on State Street in downtown. So first, some comments that I have, when I just think back to the Thomas Fire and the sadness that that brought, and also the downturn in the economy locally that that brought to us, and it seemed pretty dire, like how will we come back from that? And we've come a long way, not just from that cloud over us, but also the energy in this room of really business owners who felt unheard, not served well, not treated respectfully, and just judging by the energy level and the number of people coming to speak to us today, so much progress has been made, and I'm very appreciative for the progress that has been made. Always room for improvement, as you acknowledge in your presentation and the staff report, areas that are still underway and coming. I'm really thankful, Mr. Buell, for you highlighting what the city has done so far, and some of those I'd forgotten, that we had put resources behind, or didn't see how adding funding in one area would aid in this process, so I appreciate that. And still always looking for suggestions back to us about what we could be doing to cause improvements as well. I'm really looking forward to April and the outcome of this land development team workforce organizational study. I think it will be really interesting, and I'm sure interesting for you as well, and plenty to talk about there. And on top of being thankful for what you highlighted that we do, I want to thank Mr. Burdy and other business owners for keeping us honest, so that we don't get caught up in our own glow of self-congratulation, that we still have more to do. And I'm, thank you, Mr. Burdy, for coming forward and continuing to tell us what we need to work on. Things to look forward to also in De La Guerra Plaza, the programming that happens in there will be significant for what's happening in downtown, so as part of the conversation as well, and I know we're in conversation about that. I'm looking forward to the budget time, with those P3 performance standards you were talking about with consistency and oversight. I think it's been an ongoing piece of the story, and if there needs to be more funding behind that, I'm interested in knowing that, so that we can keep making progress in that area. I'm really looking forward to meeting our new economic development director, and hopefully they will feel welcome and ready with a list of items to tackle, and, I'm sorry, this doesn't have the filter on it, it's making sounds. And to that point, Ms. Cooper, thank you for bringing us that laundry list that you compiled and speaking with so many people of actionable items, I mean, 20 items that we've been able to make concrete progress on. And without that list that you brought forward, it would be very difficult to address these acute issues that we've had, so thank you for that. And I like the format of the report coming back with updates to those specific items that were brought forward. Yeah, some other things just for myself that I would like to see. I'm interested in looking at different ways to calculate that vacancy rate, if that's not too much, just sometime before the next report. It seems to me to make a big difference to be weighted by square footage or not. I want to thank you for doing what you can to honor El Pueblo Viejo, and I know that causes some difficulty. I don't agree with the statement in there that HLC is purely a problem. I think it's what makes us so valuable, on top of the considerations that we have to take into account, so all we can do to honor that. I'm really looking forward to what's coming forward about streamlining, repurposing spaces along State Street. We've talked around it, we talked about AUD tweaks. Councilmember Jordan alluded to it also, but what we can do to get those spaces within already-built spaces to be repurposed for livability. And I'll just put this out here ahead of budget time, that I do believe we need to invest in, as Mr. Gumbine has suggested multiple times through Planning Commission and other areas, that long-term planning where we're having businesses and multi-use residences, and I think it's worth it to invest in our community in that way for that 20-year, 50-year, 100-year plan, looking forward. So I would like to invite a motion.
Madam Mayor Protem, I will move this stuff.
Madam Mayor Pro temp, I will move the staff recommendations.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Harmon, second by Friedman. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, we have unanimous approval. And we'll close that item. Thank you for coming. And with that, we have reporting out from council members on any activities this past Seeing none, I'll share, there, I attended the, our CCE Subcommittee meeting. We discussed, that's our Community Choice Energy Meeting. We discussed joining a JPA and also saw preliminary logo, which will not be revealed yet, but is exciting, very exciting. I also attended with former Mayor Helene Schneider, the Sister City of Cotor Strings Concert. They had two students from Montenegro and two students from UCSB playing just beautiful, beautiful concert music at the Music Academy of the West. And that's all I have to report, and seeing no others, we're adjourned.